Good afternoon, everyone. If everyone could please find seats. Once again, please silence all electronic devices. And we'd like to welcome everyone to today's hybrid New York City Council hearing for the Committees on Civil Service and Labor jointly with Civil and Human Rights. For all folks on Zoom, please silence all electronic devices or send to vibrate or silent mode. If you'd like to submit testimony, please send via email to testimony@council.myc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.myc.gov. Just confirming the stream. And chairs, we are ready to begin.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon and welcome to today's -- I should probably gavel in, right? All right. Good afternoon and welcome to today's joint hearing on the Committees of Civil Service and Labor and Civil and Human Rights on Pay Equity in the Municipal Workforce. I am Councilmember De La Rosa, Chair of the Civil Service and Labor Committee. While pay inequity is not a new problem, it is one that has evolved over time and one that has become more difficult to identify as instances of direct wage discrimination have subsided. However, we can only begin to address these disparities if we know they exist. The aim of today's hearing is to identify the factors driving the entrenched gender and racial wage gaps so that we can correct these biases and ultimately strengthen this New York City's workforce. Today, we will be questioning the administration about the city council's second round of findings from Local Law 18 of 2019, which analyzes pay disparities based on race, ethnicity, gender, and other protected classes among municipal employees. The city council's analysis found that occupational segregation, which is the funneling of employees into certain jobs along gender and racial lines, is a key factor driving pay inequity in the city's workforce. I am eager to hear the administration's plans to reverse occupational segregation and expand recruitment efforts. We are also hearing three bills that will increase transparency of the city's pay structure to help us evaluate the root causes of pay disparities. Intro 515, sponsored by Speaker Adams, would require that agencies conduct an analysis of compensation data and measures to address pay disparity and occupational segregation and more. Intro 541, sponsored by Councilmember Lewis and myself, would amend Local Law 18 on the reporting of pay and employment equity data. And Intro 527, sponsored by me, would require each city agency that requires applicants to take civil service exams to report on the metrics related to those examinations to evaluate and expand diverse recruitment and retention while within city government. Public sector employment has long been a source of economic security for women and people of color. Prior to the pandemic, people of color comprised 62% of the city's workforce, and women comprised 59%. Public service jobs were coveted because they are most likely to be unionized, well-paid, with benefits and protections for workers experiencing compounded racial and gender income gaps. We must work to safeguard these jobs so that they supply family-sustaining wages that provide economic security to the New Yorkers. City employees work hard to keep New York running smoothly, and it is only right that they be compensated fairly. I want to take this opportunity to thank Speaker Adams for her leadership on this issue and the committee staff for their hard work in preparing this hearing. Senior Counsel Nick Cano, Senior Counsel Malcolm Butthorn, who has been following this issue for many years, Policy Analyst Elizabeth Arts, as well as my Chief of Staff and Legislative Staff James Burke and Kiana Diaz, and Communications Director Frey Familia. I would also like to give a special thanks to the city council's Data Operations Unit for their important work analyzing the city's workforce data and contributing to the publication of the council's second report. I would like to thank Ala Mazawi, Rose Martinez, Brooke Fry, Melissa Nunez. I now turn it to Chair Williams for her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair De La Rosa, and good afternoon, everybody. I am Councilmember Nantasha Williams, Chair of the Committee on Civil and Human Rights. Thank you, everyone, who is joining us for this very important hearing on pay equity in the municipal workforce. On the heels of Black Women's Equal Pay Day, which happened yesterday, Black women still face a pay gap of 63 cents for every dollar earned by a white, non-Hispanic man. Today reminds us of our history fighting for racial and economic justice and the commitment it takes to make the change we need. This hearing is a critical part of the steps we are taking to combat salary inequity in the largest workforce in New York City, our municipal workforce. New York City's employees work hard to keep this city running, yet women and people of color across our workforce continue to face the impacts of pay inequity. As the council's analysis shows, on average, women and people of color are earning less than their white male counterparts. This problem is further exacerbated by occupational segregation. As we strive to achieve greater equity for all New Yorkers, it is incumbent on us as elected officials to examine whether our government is a model of equity. We must ask the question, how are we valuing our municipal workforce, the work of our city's women and people of color? Pay inequity is an insidious problem that we need to attack on multiple fronts. Local Law 18 of 2019 was a first step towards achieving our ideals of pay equity. The data we received provided us important context to continue our efforts by highlighting the role of occupational segregation in driving pay disparity. Today, we are taking another step down that road. The legislation we are hearing makes concerted efforts to analyze how we value work that is largely done by women and people of color, and how we recruit and promote within agencies and strengthen our pay equity laws. I look forward to working with the administration and receiving their feedback on the long-term efforts we can undertake to achieve a more equitable New York City.
Thank you so much, Chair Williams. I'd like to take the opportunity to also recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Menon, Marte, Lewis, Joseph Salamanca, Nurse. Thank you all for coming, and I'll turn it over now -- oh, turn it over to Councilmember Lewis now for her opening statement. Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Chair De La Rosa. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank Chairs De La Rosa and Williams for the opportunity to highlight these vitally important pieces of legislation. The city of New York is purposely called the capital of the world. It is a place where dreams are started or continued. It is a city of opportunity and second chances. I am excited to present these two vital bills, Intros 527 and Intro 541. The passing of these bills will give New Yorkers a greater chance to join the machinations that move the capital, that open opportunity and allow for dreams to become realities. Yesterday, we acknowledged Black Women's Equal Pay Day. It is a beautiful coincidence to recognize raising the salary and per-hour bars for Black women. Five years ago, the watchdog group called OpenTheBooks.com noted that 1.5% of the top 200 earners, that is, workers of New York City agencies, were women. Also, in agencies with a woman majority, the top earners were men. My legislation, Intro 541, aims to increase transparency within our municipal government in respect to analyzing and rectifying pay disparities between employees of the city of New York and to require data to be provided from agencies that historically have not been transparent with their employees' pay to report their data to the council so we can identify inequalities within our hiring practices and compensation. I am proud to co-prime Intro 527 with Chair De La Rosa, which, in concert with my legislation, will increase the diversity and inclusion of employment with the city of New York to ensure that every New Yorker seeking a career in civil service has a fair opportunity to serve the city. Every year, we promise change and opportunity, and these two pieces of legislation help to make that promise a reality. Intro 527 and Intro 541 will not be the final solutions, but they will move us close to a fair and just city government. This will be an example for other industries, private and public sectors, to increase their transparency to all. This will be a win for New York City. Thank you, Chairs De La Rosa and Williams.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. I also want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Moya, and I'll now turn it over to Committee Counsel to swear in the administration and review the hearing procedures as we are joined by both by the public and in person -- both by the public, both in person and virtually.
Thank you, Chairs De La Rosa and Williams. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. My name is Jay Sreekanabathy. I am counsel to the Committee on Civil and Human Rights. Before we begin testimony, I want to remind everyone that is joining us via Zoom that you will be on mute until you are called to testify. We will be calling public witnesses to testify in panels of four after the conclusion of the administration's testimony and council member questions, so please listen carefully for your names. Councilmembers, you will be called on for questions after the full panel has completed testimony. We will be limiting council member questions to five minutes. Please note that, for the purposes of this virtual hearing, we will not be allowing a second round of questions. For public witnesses, once your name is called, if you're joining us via Zoom, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin after setting the timer. So please listen for the timer to be called. For fairness of all testifying today, the public testimony will be limited to five minutes per person. When the sergeant announces your five minutes is up, we ask that you wrap up your comments, and we can move on to the next person. Of course, you can always submit testimony up to 72 hours after the close of the hearing, and we will review your in testimony. I will now turn to my co-counsel, Malcolm Butthorn, to swear in the administration.
Good afternoon. My name is Malcolm Butthorn, serving as counsel to the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. I will now call on the following members of the administration to testify and/or answer questions. From the Equal Employment Practices Commission, Aldrin Vanilla, Chair, and Jean M. Victor, Executive Director. From the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, DCAST, Deputy Commissioner of Human Capital, Barbara Danenberg, and Chief Citywide Equity and Inclusion Officer, Sylvia Montalban, and from the Office of Labor Relations, First Deputy Commissioner Daniel Pollak. I will first read the oath, and after, I will call on each member from the administration individually to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before these committees and respond honestly to council member questions? Chair Vanilla? Executive Director Victor?
Yes.
Deputy Commissioner Danenberg?
Yes.
Chief Montalban?
Yes.
And First Deputy Commissioner Pollak. Since Chairman Vanilla's not here, whoever wants to start with testimony? And we should just move the microphone. Whoever's going to go first?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chair De La Rosa and Chair Williams, and members of the Committee on Civil Service and Labor and Committee on Civil and Human Rights. I'm Barbara Danenberg, Deputy Commissioner for Human Capital at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, DCAST. I am joined today by my colleague Sylvia Montalban, DCAST's Chief Citywide Equity and Inclusion Officer, Jean Victor, Executive Director of the Equal Employment Practices Commission, and Daniel Pollak, First Deputy Commissioner of the Office of Labor Relations. We have provided a fuller, longer testimony, but I'm just going to make brief remarks here. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you all and delve into the work that we are doing to enhance pay equity within the municipal workforce. In city government, it's our responsibility to ensure everyone has equitable access to opportunities. That includes fair compensation regardless of their sex, age, religion, disability, race, sexual orientation, and/or any other protected classification. Among our agency's core values is our commitment to equity by way of providing services that help city government uplift and empower all New Yorkers. To achieve this goal, DCAST established the Office of Citywide Equity and Inclusion, known as CEI, helmed by my colleague Sylvia Montalban. Together, CEI and Human Capital collaborate and provide guidance to agency Equal Employment Opportunity Officers and agency personnel officers to improve service delivery, increase compliance with EEO and civil service policies, and increase access to employment and promotion opportunities. This work is central to our identity as an agency and to the advancement of our city. In 2020, the city council published its first report on pay equity. The report's findings revealed that when looking at gender, the adjusted pay gap is relatively small, with female employees earning 0.4% less than male counterparts. Similarly, when examining race and ethnicity, people of color make less than white employees, but the gap is progressively closing. In fact, Black employees earn 0.986 on the dollar compared to white employees. Hispanic or Latina employees earn 0.989 on the dollar compared to white employees, and Asian employees earn 0.993 on the dollar compared to white employees. New York City is faring better than the national average. Our strongest tool to combat pay inequity is rooted in the continued reliance of our civil service system, where together with salaries set through collective bargaining, we ensure that employees in the same title are treated equitably. This work happens in close collaboration with the Office of Labor Relations as they represent the city in collective bargaining negotiations with municipal unions and work to reach agreements that are acceptable to both the city, unions, and their members. In addition to pay equity, we are also addressing occupational segregation to enhance diverse recruitment in titles and EEO job categories that are highly paid but predominantly white and/or male. Over the past years, DCAST has developed a multi-pronged approach towards addressing these disparities. Please allow me to thank you all for your time and for your commitment to increasing pay equity. We recognize that there are opportunities for improvement and to combat occupational segregation, and look forward to working closely with the city council to accomplish these goals. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to come here today and be before you. Chair De La Rosa, Chair Williams, Committee Counsel, and the members of the Civil Service and Labor and Civil and Human Rights Committees. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. At the outset, I too want to thank you and applaud you as city council for taking up the fight for equal and fair compensation for all city employees, particularly women and minorities, and for the remediation of occupational segregation in the city's workforce. The EEPC will offer an abridged testimony today, but will submit its full statement for the record. We're here today to present testimony on proposed Bill Number 515. Just to give you some background on the EEPC, our charter mandate obligates us to review, evaluate, and monitor the employment procedures, practices, and progress of city agencies. Local Law 13 requires us to submit an annual report identifying the racial and ethnic groups underutilized in the city's workforce. It must be noted that Local Law 13 does not include women in its language, minorities only. And under the prior administration, we did request that women be included in this legislation. We will be making a separate request again for this administration. So, as mentioned earlier, the EEPC submits a report in accordance with Local Law 13. We recently submitted our report, and we found we had four findings. One, that the job group availability estimates in the seeds' availability reports are somewhat aged and not consistently aligned with other availability estimates, such as the U.S. Census data and the civil service list data. Availability estimates should be periodically reviewed to ensure that they are current and accurate. Number two, underutilization applies to job groups regardless of the number of entities that use the title, the size of the entity, or the number of employees in the title at a particular entity. Number three, occupational segregation is present and varies by demographics in many titles. And four, in many instances, white male applicants pass civil service exams at higher rates than other applicants on civil service exams. In some instances, they were also selected for hire, and percentages that substantially exceeded their availability estimates, even though considerable numbers of applicants from other demographics also passed exams. So, I'd like to continue with the definition of occupational segregation. It's defined as a concentration of racial groups, gender groups, or other demographic groups in certain occupations and/or job groups. With respect to occupational segregation, we found that, in general, white workers tend to be more populous in those titles and job groups that are paid more than other titles and job groups that are predominantly comprised of Black, Hispanic, and Asian individuals. The EEPC recommended in its report that the city offer training and other opportunities for advancement for those workers in these job groups in order to offer opportunities for growth and advancement in their careers, as well as access to jobs that are more highly Consistent with our charter mandate, we recently formed and convened an employment advisory committee. The purpose of the committee is to collaborate with other agencies, to prioritize research topics, cooperate with other agencies to avoid the duplication of research efforts, leverage the collective expertise of the committee to help inform the EEPC in its own work, assist, if needed, in any committee or citywide research initiatives, and provide assistance to the EEPC with data collection efforts, if needed. Invited to participate were representatives from DCAST, New York City's Office of Labor Relations, the CUNY Community Colleges, the New York City Law Department, the New York City Commission on Human Rights, the Mayor's Office, and City Council's Committees on Women and Gender Equity and Civil and Human Rights. This committee may be a good place to start the discussion on how best to address pay equity and occupational segregation in municipal government. The remainder of my remarks will be on the particulars of the proposed legislation and how it relates to the EEPC. First, this legislation will amend Section 815 of the city charter, which section concerns the powers and duties of agency heads concerning personnel management. It amends Paragraph 19 to specify that each agency must include in its plan to provide equal employment opportunity an analysis of the agency's compensation data and measures to address pay disparities and occupational segregation, among other things. Thus, if the agencies are addressing these important issues on an annual basis, it's unclear how the EEPC's comparable worth analysis, as included in this legislation, can add to the conversation. Secondly, the comparable worth analysis would require the EEPC to physically go to every agency to determine the nature of the work required by each role in the agency, the demands of the role, and the skills a worker utilizes in the role. It is unclear why the agency who would be in the best position to make these assessments would not be asked to do so as part of their assessment of pay disparity and occupational segregation. According to recent statements prepared by the Office of State Deputy Controller for the city of New York, the city's workforce comprises 129 distinct agencies, including the Department of Education and the offices of elected officials and 59 community boards. While the majority of these agencies employ a small fraction of the city's full-time employees, the 38 largest agencies with 250 or more full-time positions employ nearly all of the city's full-time workforce. The city's full-time staff numbers approximately 284,000 to 300,000 employees. The city's career and salary plan for its full-time employees contains more than 1,600 civil service titles, although many refer to the same type of occupation differentiated by factors such as assignment or level of experience. Compensation for represented employees is handled by the Office of Labor Relations for 95% of city employees. Given the numbers of agencies, titles, and employees, the kinds of analysis contemplated by this legislation would be a huge endeavor for even expert consultants to undertake. For the EEPC, it would be nearly impossible, given the EEPC's team of three-city research scientists, who must also fulfill our comprehensive Local Law 13 reporting responsibilities. Moreover, even if the EEPC had the resources and expertise to undertake such an analysis, it is unclear what value this analysis will bring, particularly since the agency heads will be required to address compensation and occupational segregation in their workforces through their annual plans. Since DCAST already has plans to conduct a pay equity study, then perhaps the city's resources should not be used to create a comparable worth analysis, but instead explore other, less resource-heavy alternatives that could provide greater value. For example, focusing on those job groups where occupational segregation is found and conducting surveys to gauge employees' interest in preparing for other career-growth opportunities that are better paying, or conducting a pilot program to address occupational segregation on a more focused scale, and reevaluating determinations of underutilization when a job group contains a majority of minority employees. As an example of a difference that may be made within the city's control, if an agency is determined to have underutilization of Black women in its clerical job group, and Black women make up the majority of the clerical job group, aren't we just perpetuating occupational segregation of Black women in the clerical job group? Perhaps we should look at our current practices to see if such unintended consequences can be easily rectified. Again, I applaud the work of the council for their interest and willingness to address and rectify these difficult issues. The EEPC is pleased to be part of the solution and would be delighted to be part of the planning process and consulted on the proposed legislation, solutions, and remedies, but the EEPC is absolutely unable to perform either the comparable worth analysis that is being proposed or any other additional analyses with our current staffing levels and resources. In fact, the EEPC, with its current staff of 12, split between the audit unit, the research unit, and the administrative team, is unable to take on any additional work unless additional resources, staffing, and expertise is provided, or amended requirements are amended. Thank you for the opportunity to present our position on the proposed legislation, and this concludes my remarks.
Well, thank you all so much for testifying today, and I want to thank specifically the staff that has been here over and over again. We've had a lot of hearings in the last two months, so I want to thank you all for being here. I want to just harp on an issue that I'm hearing, especially in your last testimony, and I want to say that I am concerned, as the Civil Service and Labor Chair, about the proposed budget cuts, right, across city agencies and staffing levels. And I know this is not a budget hearing, so I'm not going to put you all on the spot about that, but I want to make sure that I'm saying clearly for the record, as most of our municipal unions go into contract negotiations, as our city agencies are clearly stretched, as we have a crisis of asylum seekers, new neighbors that are coming into our city, the talks of a proposed 3% cut across the board will leave these agencies completely hollowed. And so I just want to put that for the record. I'm going to continue to say that as we have these discussions. I want to first harp on the comparable worth analysis. A comparable worth analysis assigns value to the skills and responsibilities that roles add to an employer. The evaluation can be used as a tool to address and prevent pay disparities based on gender, race, and ethnicity. Does the city already have a plan to conduct a pay equity audits or comparable worth analysis of city agencies? If so, could you please share the timeline for this work? If not, does the agency support Intro 515, which would require city agencies to conduct that analysis? And I know we've heard some sprinkling of opinions in the testimony, but I'd like to see if the administration has a firm position on that.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your question, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about our many multifaceted plans for addressing pay inequity and occupational segregation. To your point, one of the items that the city is working on with the Pay Equity Cabinet is a job title evaluation study, which is something similar to what I think you were talking about. And this study, which we are hopefully going to kick off very soon, we're looking to identify a vendor in order to do this work. And this study will focus on looking at certain titles that are specified, and within those titles, what the qualification requirements are, what the job duties look like, and how... and how that compensation is related to those skills and duties. So we're hoping to kick that off very shortly.
Okay, so right now you don't have an official timeframe for the study, just starting?
Right, we're searching for a vendor.
Okay. I definitely want to have Chair Williams ask some questions about, some questions that she has as well. I do want to just ask about what measures are in place to ensure that a salary offer for a lateral hire and not a new hire is based on the candidate's qualifications and not controlled by supervisors making that salary offer.
Thank you. So depending on the type of title that it is, so as my colleague expressed earlier, ninety-five percent of city employees are represented, meaning that their salary is set through my partners at O L R and Labor. But for the five percent, I'll speak to the five percent of employees whose salaries are discretionary. And one thing that we do to inform and educate agencies as to how to make an appropriate valuation of the job is to, through Executive Order twenty-one, which does not allow for basing a new employee's salary based on their previous salary. And this goes a long way towards evaluating the job and not the person or what the candidate looks like and how that salary is set. So that is something that we work very closely with agencies to ensure that that's what they're following. And if they need guidance or assistance, D C A S is here to assist with that.
Great. I'm going to pass it to Chair Williams. I have some questions about collective bargaining, but I'll have Chair Williams ask her questions and come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So sticking with occupational segregation, the council's analysis of twenty-nineteen data found that non-white employees and female employees predominantly hold civil service titles with the lowest median salaries. And the same groups represent a much smaller proportion of employees who hold civil service titles with the highest median salaries. Mayor Adams has repeatedly touted equal pay for equal work, yet the City Council concluded that occupational segregation remains a driving force of pay inequity within the city's workforce, as we all are discussing today. So I just have a few questions about actual implementation, because we do know that recommendations have been made. So does the administration believe occupational segregation harms the economic security of working women and their families?
Thank you for your question. So the city, as I alluded to earlier, the city does have a multifaceted approach to occupational segregation and eliminating pay inequity. So one of the things that we are working on that is, and of course, we are supported by the administration. I mentioned the study that we're going to do. But the D C A S specifically is responsible for working with agencies, providing that guidance, providing training. So we train both the E E O officers and the agency H R officers who work in tandem with their agency head in order to ensure that their agency has a responsible compensation plan. So we work very closely with them. We provide training. And we also provide assistance, as I said earlier, if they have any questions or they're having a difficulty with that information. Something else that we worked on as a result of our work with the Pay Equity Cabinet is we developed a tool for agencies to use. It's called the Salary Benchmarking Tool. And that's a tool that agencies can utilize so that when they are trying to evaluate a job, because again, we want agencies to evaluate jobs and not candidates. So when they're looking at the job, they can see how that job is compensated across agencies, across different municipal areas, and make a better decision as far as compensation.
So to follow up to that, do you have, in addition, any other concrete action? So you mentioned training, you mentioned salary benchmarking. Are you doing anything else that's a concrete action? And does it also get to internal promotions? Because we've had existing city employees come to us and talk about the lack of internal promotions within a particular agency.
So I'll speak to promotion opportunities, and I'm going to turn it over to my colleague to answer the rest of your question and talk about the other work that we are doing. So D C A S is involved with promotions at the agency level through the civil service system. So D C A S develops and administers promotion examinations, which are used by agencies in order to fill these promotional roles and these vacancies. And again, the highlight of civil service is that these promotions are then made based on merit and fitness and not on discretion, as agencies need to follow the civil service law when they're making these appointments. And D C A S will audit the eligible list certification that they use in order to make those appointments to ensure that the civil service rules were followed.
So you conduct an audit of the promotion. Do you guys like run demographical data on that? To kind of see who's being promoted, what type of people are being promoted?
Can you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
So you said you do an audit when, you do an audit of an agency regarding their promotional practices to make sure they're complying with the law?
Correct. Based on the civil service list. So only those civil service list appointments, correct.
And so the question was, do you have demographical data? Does it show what type of people are actually getting promoted?
So that would reside at the agency level, but that is something that we can certainly take a look at. But again, I want to reiterate that with civil service, appointments are made based on merit and fitness, and agencies must follow the eligible list, which results from an examination, in score order. So they can't hop around or, you know, pick someone that has more seniority or whatever. They have to follow the scores. So, but to go back to your question, that is certainly information that we have.
And what about positions that are not civil service titles? So for instance, let's say someone comes in a job and they come in as a civil service employee clerical, but they've gone on to get their masters, and they've been with the agency for a while. And maybe they want a different promotion that's not particularly in the civil service title. So I'm guessing that particular job posts wouldn't be held to the same standard as what you mentioned. So how do you guys account and calculate for those positions?
Right, so thank you for that question. Agencies are ultimately responsible for their own hiring promotion practices. So an agency head working with their H R department and their E E O officer would ensure that the agency is equitably and fairly promoting employees within that agency for these discretionary positions.
Okay, but D C A S doesn't have any oversight or...
That's correct.
Does any type of auditing of that practice? Okay. The other question I had was, according, similar to the twenty-nineteen data that we keep touting, what efforts are being undertaken to diversify the ranks in agencies that are most acutely impacted by occupational segregation, such as D S N Y, F D N Y, do it where management is largely white and male? And I'm sure as you have seen or might have seen, we held a hearing, an F D N Y hearing just this week. And so those statistics are quite startling. So just wanted to know if you all have undertaken any efforts.
Sure, and I'll kick it up, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague. One of the ways that D C A S helps with combating that occupational segregation is through targeted recruitment and assisting agencies with that targeted recruitment in order to fill positions, in order to provide information to job seekers so that they even know that these jobs exist and what it entails in order to obtain the job, because sometimes that's a mystery. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague.
Yes, I just want to provide some additional background information that might be helpful to assess, you know, those specific questions you have. But D C A S does provide guidance and structure to the agencies, even though they're accountable to, for their own hiring and employment decisions. And some of the things that we do, for example, along the spirit of Executive Order twenty-one, which we previously mentioned, is that we ensure and we encourage agencies to make sure that their hiring managers take very crucial training, such as unconscious bias training, structured interview training. So this is part of our efforts to sort of standardize the approach in agencies to make these objective employment decisions. This is really a layered process. We make an effort, again, to provide the guidance, and we continuously engage the agencies with a lot of this monthly best practice meetings to reinforce these principles. Another thing I want to point out that has a pervasive impact in the city is our Office of Citywide Recruitment. So they are a unit, a bureau, that exists in the Office of Citywide Equity and Inclusion, and they have been functioning since twenty-fifteen. They have had, they actually do very broad outreach to do extensive inclusive recruitment. And I just want to point out that they've had, you know, almost a thousand seven hundred events since their inception. They have reached over almost eighty-four thousand people throughout the years. And even, you know, in these past years, they've become very more innovative in how they reach the public, even nationwide, to make opportunities available. So one of the things that they do is that they partner with agencies to give them strategic inclusive recruitment practices. That means that they teach them how to interpret their workforce data, to inform their recruitment efforts, to target hard-to-recruit titles. They collaborate with these agencies to make these opportunities known for the public. They set up city talk panels, which profile and show a lot of our city workforce working in these titles, to show the public how attractive it is to work for the city. They also actually conduct a lot of networking to build pipelines throughout the city. So they speak to a lot of academic institutions, veterans associations, LGBT community. A lot of the demographics of the community that may be underrepresented and that we also want to increase the representation in our workforce. They provide information on civil service exams. They hold monthly one-on-one, civil service one-on-one training sessions to actually inform the public and even the current workforce on how they can improve their pathway, their career pathway, within city government. They demystify the civil service process because it can be a little bit confusing. And so making this information available is crucial. They have monthly newsletters. They host a lot of other panels and events that they coordinate with the agencies. So they're making a huge impact, but again, as I said, it is a layered process, and we all collaborate to do all of this.
Thank you for all of that. And as you were listing out all the things that are happening with your agency, I know F D N Y also conducts their own outreach. The thing that came to mind was, are there any like metrics of success? Because it seems like there's a lot of attention and energy going to recruitment, but the numbers have sort of stayed the same, with some marginal increase with the fire department. But folks argue a part of that increase was a lawsuit. So nothing that we as a city proactively did, but in fact, something that was forced upon the city to address. So have you established any metrics of success in terms of like your trainings or the recruitment to say, okay, this was effective because we saw an increase here? Or are we just kind of shooting in the dark with these approaches?
So we definitely consider a lot of options. And for example, we have plans to get information about, and polling the people that are reached, for example, through a lot of these information sessions, to see how many of those people have actually applied for civil service examinations or actually taken them. And that's information that we want to cross-check with our Bureau of Examinations to see the success rate there. So that's just one example of the things that we are exploring to do so that we can derive some kind of metrics that will inform more our targeted efforts.
Thank you. So I will now turn to one of the bills. Question for E E P C. Introduction five fifteen places requirements on the Equal Employment Practices Commission, which is an independent, non-mayoral oversight entity tasked with auditing, reviewing, and monitoring the equal employment practices of the City of New York. For F Y twenty-three, the E E P C has an annual budget of one point three million dollars with fourteen authorized positions, although we heard from you today that you have twelve of those fifteen. This is a reduction from fifteen positions due to the city's P E G, which represents seven percent of E E P C's total workforce. You know, I've been advocating strongly internally and externally about increasing, of course, your baseline. So just wanted to know, because you did mention in your testimony that this would be pretty much impossible to do based off of your current staffing. So what resources does E E P C need to perform the comparable worth analysis required by intro five fifteen? And if the agency is unable to fulfill the mandate, which you've stated in your testimony, which agency do you feel is better equipped to handle the task?
As far as the resources that would be needed, we would definitely need the expertise within the agency. We would need to at least have someone who would be able to conduct or oversee this kind of an analysis. We would need the people to actually perform the analysis. So we would be looking at an increase of staff of at least, at least, you know, a handful of people. We, we basically, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. We would need at least a handful of people.
I didn't hear the last thing you said.
Yeah, I would just leave it at, we would need a handful of people.
Okay. And so do you have any suggestions on another agency that you think could better handle the task, if it wasn't you?
I couldn't really say. But as I said in my testimony, we do have this advisory committee. And perhaps the advisory committee could look into it and help to kind of form what, you know, what the scope of that project would be, which I think would be very huge. It would probably, I would think, would take a lot of planning in terms of working with the agencies themselves and working with other agencies that work in this area.
Right. And in your testimony, you sort of mentioned that this analysis might not necessarily be needed. I forgot the language you used. You said that it's unclear what value the analysis would bring. And so I'm just wondering, do you have any suggestions on? I think as council members, we have intentions, and then sometimes the bills have unintended consequences. And so of course, we want more data. We want to be able to assess the data. And so do you have any suggestions that can get us to our goal, but is perhaps a little bit more reasonable to your particular commission? Maybe it's a narrower scope. So do you have any suggestions on that particular piece? On the analysis itself and how it could be reworked to get us to what we want to see, but is a little bit more doable on your end?
Right, yeah, I think the words I used in my testimony were less resource-heavy. I was suggesting that perhaps we start looking at some of the internal processes that we have already in place. You know, for example, I gave an example in my testimony where agencies are told that they may have underutilization of certain demographics within their workforce. So I gave the example of if an agency is told that there's underutilization of a black woman, black females with clerical workers, and clerical workers are predominantly black female, then why are we looking to put more black female clerical workers in the workforce? And that might be an area where we reevaluate and say, instead of having goals of underutilization filled within these job groups that are predominantly minority already, maybe we don't do that. Instead of, you know, looking to fill other job groups where there is a lack of minorities and women.
Okay, thank you. And I look forward to continuing conversations to get some more of your thoughts on this. So the mayor recently announced additional pegs. And so we also just kind of wanted to understand how you will meet that mandate and how it'll affect the agency's work, as of course, we're asking you to do more work. So if you could share with us how the pegs will impact your agency and how you plan to meet the mandate.
So with the peg, we would have to revert any discretionary funding that we have, which is really about, we have very little discretionary funding. It's mostly... It's mostly our non-salaried funds really deal with different things that we have to have, like we have to pay for telephone service, or we have to pay for computer licenses. We don't really have that much money in terms of free discretionary funding. We have, I believe it's $2,000 for training, $1,000 for internal training. We're talking, you know, not much money here. And if we were to give up the training monies or any of the monies that deal with our, you know, the running of our workforce, then that could have an implication on our ability to fulfill a mandate.
Thank you. Last question. So the city's employment web portal, many senior positions have an expansive salary range. For example, for a senior counsel at Do-It, the given salary range is $65,000 to $160,000. At the last civil service and labor hearing that Chair De La Rosa held on municipal staffing crisis, O L R shared the current collective bargaining agreements that require the city to hire new personnel at what is called a new hire rate, example, the lowest rate. Using the senior counsel position at Do-It as an example, if the agency was considering a new hire who is a black woman and a lateral hire who is a white man, the white man could receive the top of the pay range while the black woman would be stuck at the new hire rate at the bottom of the pay range. Do existing requirements in wide salary ranges exacerbate racial and gender pay gaps?
Thank you for that question, council member, and I'll take that. So I believe a senior counsel position, I'm not familiar with that particular position, but based on the broad pay range, it's likely a managerial position, which is subject to the pay plan for managerial employees rather than a collective bargaining agreement. Collective bargaining agreements generally have narrower pay ranges than that, not always, but generally. And the city does not require that managerial employees be paid, new hires be paid at the low end of the pay range.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to ask a few questions about collective bargaining, and we'll probably come back because there's a lot of questions on that, but I want to make sure that our colleagues have an opportunity to ask. I do want to ask, however, so the council recently had the hearing on FDNY, and we talked a little bit, and in the last hearing about maintaining the municipal workforce, we also talked about EMS and paramedics. And, you know, the low pay that they actually have is very difficult for them to retain and recruit for EMS and paramedics. And obviously, like, we're still in the grips of a pandemic. We, they're an important sector that must be, you know, robust. So Local Law 19 of 2001 requires that EMS first responders and their respective unions be allowed to collectively bargain as uniform status. Why does O L R refuse to allow them to collectively bargain even though, even after this body passed a law directing them to do so, which was unsuccessfully appealed by Mayor Bloomberg? Why are they not allowed?
Thank you for the question, council member. So speaking about Local Law 19 and that legislation, so what that legislation did is it changed the collective bargaining law, which governs how collective bargaining is done in the city. The collective bargaining law has essentially two levels of bargaining. One is the citywide level, where employees who are under the citywide collective bargaining agreement have certain terms. They negotiate some of their own terms with their own union, but certain matters that are citywide, for example, leave schedules, overtime provisions, matters like that, are governed by the citywide collective bargaining agreement, which is negotiated by D C 37. What that legislation did is it placed the EMS union in the uniform level of bargaining, which allows them to bargain on their own behalf on all matters, rather than, you know, having them covered by the citywide agreement, which covers certain matters. It did not mandate a particular result regarding bargaining. It didn't mandate that certain wage increases be provided, or certain benefits be provided. It just required that the EMS union be allowed to bargain on its own for all matters, all terms and conditions of employment. And since that legislation has passed, we've reached a number of agreements with the EMS union where we bargained such matters, including an agreement covering the last round of bargaining, which was ratified overwhelmingly by the union's members.
So you're saying that the EMS union has been allowed to engage in pattern bargaining and will be allowed in the next bargaining cycle?
We have engaged with EMS union based on pattern bargaining in the last, I don't want to say how many rounds, but certainly the last round and the round before that, and as far back as I can remember. We obviously are not in bargaining with that union at this point, so I can't speak to what will happen in the next round, but, you know, we, O L R generally engages in pattern bargaining and anticipates continuing to do so.
So I'm hearing a yes.
We will continue to engage, we continue to engage in pattern bargaining at O L R, yes.
Okay. Probation officers are one of the few, if only, law enforcement employed by the city of New York that is not entitled to uniform collective bargaining. Is there a reason, is there a reason you have excluded the probation officers, largely women and people of color, from the benefits of uniform status collective bargaining?
I would, again, I think similarly, EMS kind of, you know, I think there's some nuance there. Probation officers, much like EMS received in 2001, in a later local law, probation officers, as well as many other groups, special officers, school safety agents, deputy sheriffs, many others, were granted the ability to bargain all terms and conditions of employment. So they're no longer covered by the citywide agreement. If they want to bargain over, for example, their annual leave schedules, how much leave they receive, they can do that, whereas in the past, they would be covered by the citywide collective bargaining agreement and not be permitted to do so. And they are permitted to bargain all terms and conditions of employment as other uniformed, other unions designated uniform are. So, you know, I do think they have been permitted to continue to do so, and we will continue to bargain on the basis that the law requires.
Well, I know you know how important collective bargaining is for these workers, especially to workforce that are predominantly of color, predominantly immigrant, and majority, you know, not being paid the best wages, especially when it comes to the EMS workers. So we just want to make sure that that's on your radar. And then, let's see, we have a question here about the United Probation Officers Associations. They return, they retained an expert forensic labor economist to evaluate whether there is evidence of pay and/or promotional disparities based on race and gender-specific salary ranges to the probation officers and supervising probation officers. The expert examined whether the salary ranges stated for probation officers and supervisory probation officers are applied in practice. The report showed the amount of one-third of these officers are not even paid the minimum allowable salary, meaning that they are not even paid the least amount that they are obligated to be paid under the collective bargaining agreements. What remedial steps is the Adams administration taking to correct this wrong, both moving forward and providing relief for those persons not even being paid at least the least minimum amount that they are obligated to be paid?
Thank you, council member. I'm not familiar with that particular report, but certainly if there's anyone being paid under what the collective bargaining agreement requires, we would encourage the union to contact our office, and we'll take steps to make sure the contract is complied with.
Great. On behalf of the committee, we're asking you to proactively look into this matter and get back to us with any information you may have.
We'll do so, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to pass it on to Chair Williams in case you have some questions. Okay. Okay, we'll pass it to.
Good afternoon, everyone. My first question is, before holding a competitive civil service exam, what is the outreach you do to make sure that you're getting the best candidates to apply for these jobs?
Good afternoon, and thank you for that question. So there's, so before we administer a civil service exam, first we work with the agencies just to ensure that there is an ability to hire. So that means that they're looking to hire. So we get that information directly from the agency. We work with agencies so that we can schedule the examination or the application period for the examination around there, if they have their own, around their recruitment efforts, so that they have the ability to recruit before we open the application period or give the exam, because if they recruit after that, those prospective employees will have missed out on the civil service exam. Did you want anything else about OCR? But also, we do, citywide recruitment, our Office of Citywide Recruitment also assists with agencies, and they also, especially with the exam schedule, if there's an upcoming examination where an agency is seeking to hire, where we would like to have some targeted recruitment, they will go out into the field and hold those events around the city, as well as provide that civil service 101 that we had discussed earlier, giving people the tools and the information that they need so that they can successfully navigate the civil service system.
So you go into the communities to do the outreach to make sure you're catching the best candidate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. The entities, you collect the fee for these several examine, for the civil service examinations. What are those fees used for?
So yes, D C A S does charge a fee for civil service exams, and those fees can be found in the general examination regulations. And the fees are based upon the salary of the job for which the examination is for. And also, I would like just to point out that although D C A S does charge a fee for civil service examinations, we also offer fee waivers for job seekers who are currently unemployed, receiving public assistance, U S veterans. So we do offer that opportunity for employment as well, because our mission is to get as many people who are interested in city jobs to be able to take those jobs. The fees that are collected go into the city's general fund. They don't come to D C A S. So you would have to, that's an O and B question as to what is done with those fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wanted to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Eric Batcher. The question that I have is pertaining to the NYPD. So the NYPD has used promotional lists as a tool to improve diversity in their ranks. For example, traffic and safety agents, who are predominantly black and brown women, were given the opportunity to take promotional exams to become police officers instead of taking an open competitive exam. This encouraged career advancement for a historically underrepresented group and allowed the NYPD to retain institutional knowledge. What steps are being taken by agencies to use the existing inter-agency pipeline for promotional opportunities? I know, again, in our hearing with FDNY, they had something that was a little similar, but we heard reports that that exam has not been given for quite some time, but just wondering if you have any information on that?
Certainly. Thank you for your question. There is a similar pathway in the fire department that follows the police officer model, where EMS workers are offered that promotion opportunity when we give the next round of examination. So yes, that will, that exam will be offered the next time we offer the firefighter examination. And then regarding other pathways, we continually look, when we're giving examinations that are at, that are at the promotional level or a higher level within the promotional tree, we do speak to agencies. We ask them, do you have folks in similarly situated titles who may be eligible to take this exam, who you think would be a good fit for following this pathway? And we can either, we, D C A S, can either permanently add those titles as a promotional eligible title to the pathway, or we can do it per examination. So if we know that an agency, for example, agencies have a really great hiring need in a particular title, we can try to funnel more city employees through that career pathway so that promotions can be made from within, because yes, we agree with you that our agency's talent is best suited to fill those promotional roles.
So this question is in reference to gender pay gaps. So we know during the pandemic, women experienced greater job losses, which may have impacted pay equity between men and women in some sectors. In addition, Morningstar recently reported that during the pandemic, female C-suite executives' pay compared to male counterparts, compared to male counterparts fell to a nine-year low, and women would have to wait until 2060 to approach parity at the current rate of progress. Do you have any data on our own municipal workforce, whether or not we've seen greater job losses among women, especially women of color? And if so, what mitigating actions has the administration taken to counter this?
Thank you. So yes, looking back during the pandemic, it is true that across the country, we saw a larger increase in women leaving the workforce. However, within the city of New York, we did not see that. We actually saw a decrease in women leaving the workforce during the pandemic, a decrease of about 9%. So it went from 46% to about 37%, 36%. Sorry, my math is. So we did notice that, and again, we attribute that to the city's response to the COVID pandemic and our generous leave policies that we made available to our workforce. And now that we are in a new fiscal year, we're seeing that the rates of women leaving the workforce are not as low as they were during the pandemic, but they have not increased beyond what they were in 2019, for example.
Thank you.
Piggybacking on that question, as you know, we just had the hearing on the staffing crisis, and we learned that the overall vacancy rate is 7.9 as of June of this year. Has D C A S observed any trends across race and gender for those employees departing the city workforce?
Thank you. So due to the recency of that data, we have not yet seen any trends as far as what that composition is of employees. But in general, what we, what we normally see is that people leave because they're retiring, so folks that are eligible for retiring, and folks leave who have between zero and four years of experience, work experience. So people with less experience are also the ones who depart city service, and that is a trend that we've seen since we started tracking it in 2013.
And a related question, but a little non-related. The city contracts on many services that provide the residents of the city, provides for the residents of the city. Does the city require that those contracted service providers to analyze their own compensation practices and to help address and prevent pay disparities based on gender, race, or ethnicity, so any contracted services, providers?
And I can't speak for citywide contracts or contracting services, but the city, I will say that the city is an equal opportunity employer, and I would suspect that the city encourages any, anyone that contracts with it to follow those same regulations.
Thank you. And I do have one question for E E P C. Have y'all advocated to the administration to not be included in the upcoming proposed pegs? Have y'all advocated to the administration, given, you know, how small your budget is to do the mandated services? Have you advocated to the administration to not be included in the proposed pegs? We will, thank you. Batcher?
Chair De La Rosa, if I could, I'd like to, I believe I misspoke earlier in one of my answers, and I'd just like to correct it regarding probation officers and uniform status. I apologize, sometimes hard to keep track of the 150 bargaining units we have. They are in fact not covered by Local Law 56, so they maintain under the citywide level of bargaining. So, you know, in response to the question about why that is, I would just say that's what the collective bargaining law says. So we follow the collective bargaining law, and we negotiate with them as we do other groups that fall within that citywide group.
Okay. Our request still stands for consideration. And let me just ask D C A S about the citywide learning and development. It's a central source of training within New York City Government for employees of all levels. Classes are taught by a mix of government, university, and private sector experts, and span seven portfolio areas, including technology skills, personal development, management supervision, professional practices, organization and executive development, certification, and credit-bearing courses, and NY-specific, in any NY-specific content. In 2021, how many municipal employees enrolled in the D C A S learning and development trainings?
Thank you. In fiscal year '22, we had 337,000 municipal employees take our, partake of our training.
300? And what? Say it again?
I'm sorry.
What was the number again?
337,000.
Okay. How many municipal employees in the classes with each of the seven portfolios? Anybody else, do you have that breakdown?
So I have the number for the managerial and professional development training, and that is almost 55,000 in the last fiscal year who took those trainings. I can certainly get you a breakdown of the other categories if you like.
Okay. Are there, thank you, and are there limitations on trainings that employees can access based on education, work experience, or focused area or agency?
So it actually depends on the training. Some trainings, you know, it's a part two, and you need to have taken the earlier preliminary training in order to take that advanced-level training. Some certification courses require that you have certain either work experience or experience in that area in order to take the certification course, to be certified at the end. So really, it depends on the courses. But for those that are, you know, general professional development and general work, improving skills, there aren't any other special requirements.
How many times per year and in what medium are municipal employees given information on the DECAST learning and development trainings? How do you get the word out?
Thank you. So we put out a new training catalog three times a year. And so that changes the portfolio and what courses we are offering, what vendors we're procuring with, so that city employees have an opportunity to constantly have a fresh group of trainings. And then, of course, there's the core trainings that are always available. And that catalog is put out as a catalog, you know, in hard copy. It's available online. It is shared with every single city agency with their training liaisons. It's shared with their HR partners so that city employees, we know that city employees will have access to those training courses.
In the last hearing that we had about the municipal workforce, you mentioned that there was an attempt to make the exam more accessible, the civil service exam more accessible, by allowing for people to take an exam that opens a more broader range of positions? Can you speak to that? And tell us again, what are some of those steps that are being taken?
Sure. So I think that you're referring to our bridge exam, where it's one examination, one application, and for up to 10 jobs? Or I think it might be 11 jobs? Sure. So we worked, we're very proud of this because this is something that's brand-new to the city. We've never strayed from the, you know, model of one examination, one application. You sit and take the test, and, you know, you hopefully will appear on that eligible list. So we're trying to think of ways where we can offer more access to jobs without putting that burden on the job seeker. So, you know, for anyone that's ever been seeking a job, it's a full-time job, looking for a job, right? So anything that we can do as a city to showcase the wonderful opportunities that we have, and then remove some barriers and make it a more streamlined, simpler process, that's what we're looking to do. So this bridge exam is a really great example. And I think it, actually, the testing starts next week for that exam. So very exciting.
Yes, get us the info so we can spread the word. Do you think that that exam and that change is going to help with, you know, dealing with things like occupational segregation?
That, we are certainly very hopeful. And the fact that we received 4,000 applications for this exam, I feel like it's being received very well. And we are hoping that it will do exactly that, is, you know, make more jobs accessible to more people and a broader group of people.
Great, thank you. Going back to the hiring, in the order of the list of who scores the highest and has to be hired first, please explain the one and three rule.
Thank you for that question. Our folks at Citywide Recruitment can probably do a better job since they do this all the time. But in a nutshell, the civil, and this is civil service law that we are following. So a hiring agency, when they receive a civil service list, let's say there's 100 people on that list, the people who scored the highest would be ranked number one and so on and so forth, and the person that scored the lowest would be 100. Agencies, when they are making hiring selections, would call in number one, two, and three. And if they are filling a vacancy, they would need to select either number one, number two, or number three before they can move on through the rest of the list. So let's say the agency selects number two. So number two is selected, they're appointed to the job. However, that doesn't mean that person number one and person number three are out of luck. So they will be considered again. So the next round of interviews would be person number one, person number three, and person number four, and so on and so forth, until the list is exhausted.
So they retain their number, their position?
That's correct.
As one and three, for example?
That is correct. And they have three, they will be considered three times before they are removed from the list. But then, if they are removed from the list, they can petition to DECAST to ask us to put them back on the list. And when they're back on the list, again, they're back in the same score order that they were in before.
Thank you. For OLR, to clarify for the record, is OLR going to allow the EMS to engage in uniform pattern bargaining, meaning along with other uniform officer positions?
So as I mentioned, we are not in negotiations with that union at this point. We reached an agreement for the last round of bargaining based on the civilian pattern. And I wouldn't want to comment on, you know, positions we may or may not take in negotiations that haven't started yet.
Thank you, that's all.
Hi again. What model is used to predict individual compensation? Please explain in detail how that model works and why the city chooses this model.
Thank you for that question. So again, just to circle back to what we had said before, 95% of city employees are in titles that are represented for collective bargaining, and my colleague can speak to that. For the 5% that are in the discretionary titles and that where salary is not set, we work with agencies, again, to educate them and ensure that they are evaluating jobs based upon the knowledge, skills, abilities that are necessary in order to perform that work successfully at the agency, and that they're not setting salaries based upon a particular candidate or a particular job seeker. Because, again, in accordance with EO 21, agencies cannot use prior salary when they're setting and making a job offer for a new salary.
And could there be another model? Like, do you know why that model was chosen? Like, maybe, I know it's discretionary jobs, but could there be a better set salary versus, like, individuals? Because I think it just leaves room for a lot of subjectivity around compensation.
Sure. And the way that the city is administratively set up, DECAST and OLR, we are oversight agencies. So we do provide guidance, and we do provide, you know, policies and processes. However, the responsibility for hiring within a particular agency rests with the agency head. And again, in accordance with their HR department and their EO officer. So it's really, the way that the city is, the way the city operates, each agency is responsible for that. And oversight, again, just provides that guidance and assistance when necessary.
Yeah, sometimes when I hear oversight, I think, like, you have more of the authority to hold agencies accountable? Is that how you, no, it's just kind of like guidance? Because you can provide guidance, but let's say DOT, which we've gotten complaints about, that agency, they don't heed the guidance. What is the recourse for that? And are you actually doing periodic, similar to how I asked about promotions, like, who's getting hired, reviewing the demographics? Do you do periodic, like, checks or reviews or audits of what is actually taking place, whether it's individual compensation, internal promotions?
Thank you. So again, going back to what you said, the oversight agencies are just that. We provide oversight, and we provide guidance, enforcement. We don't really have that enforcement arm where we can, you know, enforce any of these rules or regulations upon city agencies. However, we do work collaboratively and cooperatively. And if an issue is raised, we certainly will provide that guidance and assistance in order to rectify a situation like that. But we don't have a lens into what an individual agency is particularly doing, how they're filling roles or who they're filling the roles with. We don't really have that insight.
I wanted to offer EEPC to comment on, like, just oversight and the, because I know we've had conversations. I don't know if you want to be on the record talking about just oversight and enforcement? Because based off of what you said, how do we actually, like, hold agencies accountable? If DECAST can't do it, or if OLR isn't able to do it? I mean, there's so many agencies. How are we supposed to really assess what is taking place at the agency? And if they are really taking the recommendations from EEPC and/or the guidance from DECAST? I don't know if you have any thoughts on how, or if you have any thoughts on how we can hold agencies accountable?
Just to speak to OLR's role for a moment. You know, I think OLR's role is ensuring that our contracts are followed. So for the 95% of the workforce that's represented, ensuring that agencies are abiding by the contract, which, you know, allows us to, which contain pay rates and rules that were worked out with the representatives of these employees. So that is our primary role. And certainly, you know, if any issues that a particular agency are brought to our attention, we will work with the union representing those employees to see if they can be remedied.
But that's, like, reactive. Because you said you only chime in if there was a complaint. There's no proactive work happening, right?
In terms of OLR's work, it's mostly, it's just to ensure the contracts are followed, that we're complying with the agreements that we've reached.
I just wanted to add quickly that also, the charter doesn't really give us an enforcement power, but we truly do do constant reinforcement to the agencies. Again, Barbara's constituents and mine are the agency personnel officers and the EO officers, respectively. And there is constant reinforcement of all the guidance and the best-practice principles of these employment practices. Even at the agency head level, when we can reach them and do special presentations for them, we do that. So it's incumbent upon them to heed that information and go back to their agencies and apply it. So, you know, that is always our hope. The other way that we're able to at least get some kind of feedback on whether our information is having an impact is on the annual EO and diversity plans that these agencies produce. They do submit them to us, and we do assist them in reviewing the key components therein. And as a matter of fact, with Initiative 515, we did want to tell you that a lot of what you're requesting in there, we do agree with the spirit of those components. And actually, just so that we're not duplicating our efforts, we are certainly willing to work with you to refine what can be modified in the template for that annual plan to include the components that you're looking for within the existing annual plan. So that's one way that we assess whether our feedback to them is working.
In cases that are egregious, which I'm sure there are agencies that are really not doing the best they can to address this issue and other issues around discrimination, to be frank, when does it get escalated to the mayor's office, right? So if your agency, because I get it, it's like inter-agency, so how do you sort of enforce something on another sort of sister-brother agency? So when do certain matters get escalated to the mayor's office if it rises to that? Like, if there's been a violation or the guidance wasn't taken, when does it, or and/or does it get escalated to people?
Yeah, so let me unpack that. I did hear you mention discrimination. So when there are allegations of discrimination, so we have the EO officers, there's one per every agency. They have a staff. And they're the ones that actually follow the citywide EO policy, which actually, we just updated at the end of 2021, 23 protected classes. So people raise a discrimination claim on the basis of any of those 23 protected statuses. Then that falls to the EO officer to investigate that individualized complaint. These EO officers are trained professionals in doing these sensitive investigations. They arrive at a determination, findings of this confidential investigation, and they turn it over to their agency head, who must assess those findings and then make a determination about what to do with those findings. And in other words, if it was substantiated that somebody violated the EO policy, engaged in some form of discrimination, then that agency head has to take action about that. That's really how the process works, in terms of discrimination.
Yeah, but if your agency, because you said you work with agencies to set pay rates, and you do trainings around bias. And so in any of your conversations, whether preliminary or in hindsight, if you do discover an issue, how is that addressed? Is it escalated, or do you just deal with it with the agency? Or are there no issues? Are you saying there's never any issues? You never discover anything? There's no need to do anything? I'm just trying to understand, like, the accountability on the agency.
Well, of course, it would depend on the issue and how it's raised and discovered, right? But if a person is claiming that they're not compensated properly based on the fact that it is one of their protected statuses, such as a disability, or their gender, or their race, the agency has an obligation to specifically investigate that allegation. So everybody is afforded that fair opportunity to be heard of their specific claim.
Sorry, not to cut you off, but yes, I understand if an individual employee has an issue, they can go through the EO process, which tons of people report that the EO office is useless, actually. In fact, the Vulcan Society that's suing the FDNY is on record saying...
Testing, testing? Testing, testing, test, test?
It's on record saying that they have a vote of no confidence in the EO office at the FDNY. And so I'm not talking specifically about, like, an individual complaint, but I'm just talking about if you, from your vantage point, see an agency-wide issue, right? Maybe you discover, and maybe these scenarios are not real. I'm learning, only nine months into the job. I have no idea. You guys are the experts, so I'm asking, genuinely asking. Like, if you discover an agency-wide issue, maybe their individual compensation rates look a little funny. I don't know. Maybe you have possibly ascertained that the way that they've been doing promotions also looks odd because maybe only white males have been promoted. What then is, what does your agency do if you see something like that? Is it just more of a mediation, reconciliation that you do with the agency? Or does it get escalated?
So when there are general concerns, right, that something may be occurring that may seem inequitable, or agencies express that to us from a citywide vantage point, what we do and what we strongly recommend is for them to avail themselves of resources, such as trainings that educate the segment of their population that is possibly making decisions that need to be better informed. And I mentioned previously, things like the structured interviewing process, the unconscious bias process. We've made offerings of microaggressions training. So all of those things do chip away at, you know, matters of equity and the way people with authority or without authority behave toward each other or make decisions. So it can impact possibly compensation decisions at the hiring level. It can impact interpersonal issues among employees, employee relation issues. So we do recommend the resources that they have to take that affirmative effort to use, to try to address that. Because we can't target anybody if there hasn't been a finding against them. So at least we try to offer them preventative efforts to address maybe trends that they're seeing.
So DECAST does none of that work at all? You don't review, audit, look at anything that the agency is doing? You just provide training? You consult with them?
We don't have an audit power, but as I mentioned before, those annual plans are one of the best indicators for us of how they're doing.
The what plan?
The annual EO and diversity plans that I mentioned. That is the best source of indicators for us on how these agencies are self-reporting, on how they're doing regarding anything from recruitment to diversity initiatives, et cetera. So that is how we get the feedback, and then we literally give them feedback on things that they can address.
EEPC, you get the annual plans too, right? No, you don't get the annual plans. No, you don't get the, do you get the annual E E O? No, from other agencies? You receive it from D C A S or the agencies give it to you directly? So they, so their agencies are submitting it to to D C A S and to E E P C? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And so what do you do with it versus what do you do with it? I mean, I know you guys do reports, but like, because E E P C also has recommendation.
Yeah, so we, when we receive it, we review it as a draft and we help them, um, clarify a lot of points, um, and amplify a lot of points, um, so that it can be clear even for, um, an entity like the E E P C to then see it. And I, and I'm sure they review it for other and more important, other important purposes. But we give them guidance on how to clarify their training efforts, their recruitment efforts, their D, diversity, equity and inclusion efforts outlined therein.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, you know, I I keep saying I'm going to start saying like, explain things to me like I'm in kindergarten, you know, I'm slow. Okay, that helps. So you get it as a draft before E E P C gets it. You don't get it at the same time. You get like a raw copy, you work with them to fix it, and then it goes to E E P C?
We don't, we don't get it at the same time. They, uh, the agencies, uh, we work with them to help them, uh, prepare it, see and clarify things that they intend to say therein. So in that way, we're just giving that citywide guidance to them after they finalize it to to their satisfaction as well and to their, they submit it to their agency head. The agency head finalizes it and then they send it to us as a final, final copy. And I believe that is the one that the E P C receives as well.
Right, and the agencies send them their plans annually, but we review the plans when we receive it as part of the audit, and that would be once every four years.
Thank you. All right, well, we thank you for coming in and there will certainly be follow-up. Um, thank you for coming today.
Uh, we want to thank the administration and we'll just, everyone bear with us. We're going to switch to our public panelists. Our first panel will be on Zoom, uh, and will feature Gloria Middleton, Henry Garrido and Dean Mancios. So just give us two minutes, everyone.
When C W A Local 1180 pursued and settled a multimillion dollar lawsuit with the city of New York that specifically proved the inequities of salaries for women and minorities, we knew we needed to go a step further and create a long-term solution for the enormous problem of pay disparity in the city's workforce. Consulting with former city council members, some of whom are present members of this great body, we knew that having the data to prove our point was the only way to go. Local Law 18 was overwhelmingly passed by the former city council and that data has us here today. In 2022, we clearly see that the highest paying jobs are still reserved for white males in most agencies that were reviewed. Most glaring, however, is that those agencies with a predominant, a predominant number of women in top positions pay them far less than other agencies pay white men with similar qualifications in top management. These top ranking males often make tens of thousands of dollars more than their female counterparts in the same titles. How wrong is this?
You muted, Ms. Middleton. You went on mute, sorry. Can you unmute yourself?
Give us a second, Gloria. There we go.
Okay, I don't know why I got muted, but I'll just say this. I stand in unity with the sponsors of these bills and ask the full city council to sign Intro 515, Intro 527 and Intro 541, and then make sure that the mayor wholeheartedly does the same. Thank you for allowing me to address you today.
Thank you. And next we'll turn to Henry Garrido, Executive Director of D C 37.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Henry Garrido. I'm the Executive Director of District Council 37, largest municipal employee in New York City, representing 150,000, uh, members and approximately 90,000 retirees. 100,000 of those workers are within city agencies, the rest are, uh, in other agencies. Uh, I'm going to submit written testimony for the record, but I want to, uh, echo my sister Gloria and the support of D C 37 to, uh, the bills that have been presented. And I want to put a little bit of context on it so that, uh, give you an indication of what, uh, how this is affecting the workforce. Uh, in 2019, Local Law 13 that was passed analyzed a report of the city on council, uh, council, on the city council by citywide racial ethnic classification and on the, uh, utilization and payment on city workers. And prior to that, we have seen multiple cases where city workers, uh, are not being paid in the same equitable distribution, that is, women of color, right? Black and brown people who are working for the city of New York are not being paid enough. Uh, and we understood as a city and as a union that it was important for us to do something about it. So D C 37, in the last two rounds of collective bargaining, have done two things that are really significant and they should go on the record. The first one was we negotiated a citywide promotional, uh, opportunity that allowed people to go beyond the particular agencies and true, and promote out, right? On a citywide promotional basis. That was a key component to allow, uh, people of color to be able to become more supervisors and managers, which was a critical component of promoting people that were much more diversified. And secondly, in the last round of collective bargaining, we set aside money from the 2017, 2021 collective bargaining agreement, uh, from the collective bargaining agreement to create an equity fund. That equity fund, which was matched by the city of New York, uh, uh, aimed to adjust inequities that existed within the the workforce. And it approximately addressed the inequity that existed within 6,000 individuals, around 26 titles in the city of New York. The city matched the contributions, so the union put it aside from the collective bargaining agreement. And that helped us, you know, do deal with some of the issues that we saw with the nurses, where there was an inequitable salary between the nurses represented by D C 37, primarily in the Bronx and that of the U F T, uh, but also psychologists that were being, uh, underpaid and, uh, under, uh, in inequitable distribution. We looked at social workers and we tried to make adjustments to other titles like family parents in the schools who were working in the shelters who were being, receiving significantly less inequity and payment where primarily women and and people of color are being disenfranchised by it. So we've done our part, but quite frankly, uh, I'd like to say this, not enough. So I think that where we start, right, to make changes is we need to see the transparency of the laws, that these laws are being presented. And we want to see a number of things that are recommended to this. So we want to, you know, increase consequences for non-compliance. We want better mechanisms or reporting mechanisms to identify where there are deficiencies, right? And deficiency that exists. And then finally, we believe the city council needs to, uh, increase the accountability, right? Uh, for the agencies that are not, uh, you know, doing the diversification plan or required action plans and oversight or hiring practices. So we understand the civil service system is a path of equal mobility, right? That allows people to, uh, go into and take tests and move up according to state law. But if it's not being applied in a, in a, uh, you know, in a thorough way, uh, by D C A S, which has, I know it's doing an effort, well, we'd like to see the city council take more of an active role in there. So with that, I want to thank you for listening. I know the time will constrain. We will submit written testimony along those lines, um, but take any questions you might have at this time. Thank you, Chair Rosa, uh, for your work and your leadership and Chairs Willian, uh, on the civil service for the continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more panelist before we turn to questions. Uh, next we'll turn to Dean Mancios from the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies.
Starting time.
Thank you and good afternoon. Um, I especially want to thank the Speaker and the Committee Chairs De La Rosa and Lewis for addressing this, these issues that we have before us. Uh, my name is Greg Mancios and I'm the founding dean of the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies, the 25th and newest school at City University of New York and, uh, one of the, one of the schools that is specifically that is dedicated to public service and social justice. Many members of the city council know S I U because the council was so instrumental in establishing the school. What you may not know is that S I U's original incarnation, the lead program at Queens College, which I found, also founded, was established in 1984 in partnership with D C 37 and C W 1180, and that we have been serving New York City's civil service employees ever since. So I come here before you with 38 years of experience, not only with these two unions, but with the city workers that they represent. The students we serve are predominantly adult women, uh, and people of color, uh, and all seeking a better pathway, um, uh, career path rather, and better lives for themselves and their families. Um, and what do I hear from these worker students? Uh, they tell me working for the city is a great job. Um, you work serving the public and you're, it's a union job. it's a union job, and you get decent wages and benefits, and a level of economic security that you wouldn't otherwise have. And yet, there's a sense of injustice that sometimes boils over into frustration and anger. And it's not simply about money, it's about opportunity, respect, and fairness. So when CWA 1180 conducts a study that spotlights pay inequities as well as racial and gender segregation in the city's workforce, and the City Council conducts similar research and comes to the same conclusions, it validates what city workers have been saying for decades, and that is that the system isn't fair. It's in this context, I want to urge passage of all three legislative proposals under consideration by the Council. Each of these bills, 541, 527, and 515, address occupational segregation and pay disparity, and calls for city agencies to report data on compensation, recruitment, retention, promotions, and the metrics that are used to hire and promote city employees. Reports are not the solution to injustice, but we know from history that reports matter. They identify problems and they suggest solutions. These bills identify very serious problems of inequity in the civil service system and provide a framework for finding a solution. Moreover, each of these proposed bills points to the issue of education and training, and calls on city agencies to report on opportunities they provide for employees to advance their careers. And so I go back to the worker students that we serve in CUNY, and what do they want? They want better pathways and enhanced opportunities to improve conditions for themselves and their, their families. I'd like to suggest several steps agencies can adopt in the reporting process that would increase opportunities for city workers and would address the issues of equity and occupational segregation. Number one, provide simple and more clearly articulated pathways for career advancement, especially for those occupations that remain stubbornly segregated. B, two, provide workers or targeted categories of workers with free tuition or even paid leave to complete training and education programs that would prepare them for promotion. And three, point completion of those programs and title employees to, A, an immediate pay increase, like the 30-plus increases given to teachers by the UFT and DOE, and B, award additional points on civil service exams to employees who complete certificates or degrees, similar to the points that are awarded to, on exams to veterans. And C, any, you know, combination of those two steps. We at SLU are happy to collaborate with municipal agencies and unions on these and any proposals that would break down barriers for city workers and lead to a more fair and equitable civil service system for our great city. I want to thank you for inviting me to serve as a panelist. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't have a question. I just want to make sure that I am recognizing Ms. Gloria Middleton and CWA as a pioneer in this fight for pay equity, and thank Henry Garrido for his work for municipal workers as well as Dean Mancios. Thank you so much for your partnership. I'll pass it over to Chair Williams.
Yes, I want to associate myself with the remarks by Chair De La Rosa and just had a question. I'm always asking, like, solutions. And so, Dean, do you have any specific solutions? You've heard the testimony from the administration. I know you are well aware of these issues. And so whether it's recruitment or the way the test is administered for FDNY, I know there were conversations around the physical component that's needed. So do you have any suggestions on how we could really solve the issue around occupational segregation?
Dean Mancios, one moment. We just have to unmute you. There we go.
Got me. Okay. So we've had conversations with DCAST in the past, with 1180 and DC 37 at the table. And, you know, we've identified areas that could be improved, and we've identified subject matter. We've talked about offering certificate programs in specific areas. We could do it at SLU in some circumstances. In other circumstances, an area of expertise could better be handled by another institution at CUNY. But we at SLU have as part of our mission to align the needs of workers and the needs of agencies with areas of expertise that are available within the university. So we, and we have support from the City Council to do that. Oh yeah, that's part of our workforce development and worker education program. So we're happy to develop curriculum to meet the needs of agencies. If that's what they feel is needed, that we need, that workers need training in specific areas, we'll put together a package of courses and offer a certificate either at SLU or work in collaboration with our sister units of CUNY and development. And we'll do the, help with doing the recruiting and provide the academic support. And we'll do it with our resources that the City Council already provides us. And we'll provide that not only for students that enrolled at SLU, but also at other units of the university. You know, I suggested also, you know, increased, increasing, increased pay for employees who pursue education that are making an attempt to develop the skills that are needed for promotion. And the UFT DOE example, I think, is a great one. You know, the, when teachers pursue additional credits, they get 30 credits, they get a bump in their, in their pay. That increases advancement within the ranks and encourages career mobility. So I think there are, there are a number of solutions. The, so the idea of awarding additional points for employees who are already in the civil service system. This will help advanced women and people of color predominate in the, in the city workforce. So we're happy to sit down and explore any proposal that, that the Council has or the agencies have or any of the unions have.
Thank you. I do see that, Henry, your hand was raised. I don't know if you also have some thoughts on solutions from your vantage point.
Yeah, I do, Madam Chairman. Thank you for the question, because I think there's a critical question there that needs to be explored. There are those who believe that pattern bargaining, which has been the law of this land since at least about 60 years or so, is responsible perpetuating the inequities that exist within city government. In other words, this idea that everybody gets the same, meaning that if city workers in, say, the fire department get 3%, then everybody gets the same, then it is equitable. The fact is, that only means that if 40 years ago, there was an inequity between, for instance, gender pay, between white males and females of color, that as we apply the same principle, the same 2%, 1%, whatever the rates would be, that you're just perpetuating that inequity. In fact, you're increasing that gap because it's based on a percentage on salaries that exist. So if you start at $10,000, $20,000 less for a male that, and a female that are in the same system, being trained with the same qualifications, once you apply the percentage bargaining, you're actually exacerbating, if not increasing, you know, that gap. And I think for that reason, we need to recognize the idea of equity payment aside from pattern bargaining. We not be, we may not be able to eliminate pattern bargaining. That is, for that reason, last year, right, when we did the DC 37 negotiated, for instance, the Equity Fund for Teachers that Greg mentioned, it was clear to us that if you had a $25,000 difference between the UFT and a lot of the teachers in the, do a great job at DOE, and that of the counterparts, so early childhood education head start, that there was that gap that a 2% or a 3% was not going to cut it. And Gloria's lawsuit in the EEO proved that, right, in that you have to have significant investment in making those gaps and removing those gaps first, so that a percentage increase can have a significance. We did that with nurses. Now here, nurses that have the same qualifications as the UFT, so if you are a nurse in a private school and a Catholic schools, you are getting paid $10,000 more than if you were a nurse represented by DC 37 in a, you know, in a K through A regular school education. Same qualifications, same deal, and then the difference were $10,000. So we fixed that gap. But to fix that gap, we had to set aside funds to be able to first recognize that there's a problem, which is why I think this legislation is, or set of legislations will be so important. And second, you have to have a commitment to want to do something about the problem. And that cannot be by throwing the money to say, oh, well, we're going to do bargaining with the city unions and eventually it'll get fixed. It doesn't. Perpetuating inequity is something we should not be about. And pattern bargaining may be the way of the land, but if we don't make a real commitment to make that difference in that gap to solve it, we're going to continue to perpetuate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gloria. Sorry, your hand was raised as well.
What Henry and Greg are saying is so true. With our lawsuit, when we obtained this title of administrative manager, we looked at the minimum pay and the maximum pay. There was a difference. The minimum pay, once women of color started passing the civil service test for administrative manager, the minimum pay became stagnant. It remained at $53,000. While those who had been in the title for a while, which were before they became, before became civil service title, those who were entitled, which were mostly white males before the test came, the range was from $53,000 to $150,000. There's something wrong with that. Okay? And we were able to prove that case. It took a long time to get the stats from the city. They didn't want to give it to us. They said it was private information. Everything that we do as public workers is online somewhere. So we know, you know, different administration, different way that they thought about things. So we prevailed. We now have another title that we are pursuing, Assistant Directors in Health and Hospitals. They, we just acquired that title after 13 years in OCB, trying to get that title. And what we're finding is the pay range is $40,000, $40,000, which is lower than the lowest title that we have in H&amp;H, to somewhere to $110,000. They, you know, in certain agencies, look at DOT, where the managers in certain titles get paid a certain salary, and then look at HRA, and the same managers in a different title, which are mostly women, are getting tens of thousands of dollars less. There, there has to be a way that we provide equity for our members, for our, for people of color, whether they are members or not. What needs to be looked at is, how do people get these upgrades of money? I know there's things as merit raises. And you know what happens with merit raises. The union has never advocated for that because it's not done fairly. There are steps that you can take, as Greg said. If one obtains a degree, how do we make them whole? By making sure that they have enough experience as well as the education to be able to do a job and to increase their salary so that they are being paid fairly next to their counterpart. These are all things that we have to look at. And I've heard, I heard DCAST and I heard the EEP, they live in a different world from what we live in. And I understand their obligation and their alliance to, to sort of say that the agencies are doing what they're supposed to do and they do the best that they can. But they actually have no power over the agencies. That's the reality.
That's correct.
And we would be willing to work with this Council to see what we can come up with to provide equity in our city workforce.
Yeah, you actually, like, flagged what I was trying to get at. But I think sometimes with these hearings, it becomes this weird back and forth where they don't really want to answer. And anyway, but it's, it is, what can we do to hold agencies accountable? And that's not really clear, because we have a lot of commissions and agencies like a DCAST or EPC, which does auditing. But once they audit and provide their recommendations outside of public shaming or just being incredibly annoying to the agency, there's really no accountability. And it's, it's really clear to me that I don't even think they're doing any type of robust spot checks of what's actually happening within the agency. So yeah, I would love to continue to work with you all and Chair De La Rosa to figure out ways to hold an agency accountable. I don't know how you hold the government agency accountable. Perhaps you could find them, but I don't know how that works. But anyway, I look forward to finding some solutions because it's something that has been flagged numerous times. And I don't think that it is clear, again, on how we could really have proper enforcement, not just oversight, but enforcement to make sure that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing and more.
And can I just say, I'm sorry, I'm gonna praise the two of you for having the courage to take on what has been one of those things in government nobody wants to talk about, right? It's a fact that there's an inequity that exists, that it is pervasive, that it is agency by agency, that in fact, when you have a manager who hires a person of color and exercises an option to pay that person $10,000 more than a counterpart with the same absolute qualifications, you are creating an inequity. And every time that you pervasive, that you look the other way, you are, you know, you are continuing and making that, that inequity pervasive. So I just want to say, I want to thank you two for the courage of taking this on, not just to the legislation, but beginning to ask questions about, how do we get out from this? And we're remaining committed to helping you and helping the Council and continue to not only ask the questions, but hold people accountable for it.
Thank you all. And I think Chair Williams is absolutely right. You know, today is kind of a celebratory day for us here in the Council, given that through the Speaker's office, we've been able to put this pay equity report and continue on on this issue. This won't be the last of it. We'll certainly, we'll continue on because agency accountability is, is a big part of this puzzle. So thank you all so much for coming today and testifying.
Thank you for this panel. Our next panel will be in-person. So we'll call up Delvany Powell, the United Probation Officers Association, Beverly Neufeld, Power Her, New York, M. Celeste Carballo, Exhibition Preparator and Executive Board Member, Local 1559, DC 37, Irving Rivera, New York City Parks and Recreation Union, DC 37, and Kyle Simmons, President, Local 924, DC 37 Laborers. And we will first turn to the United Probation Officers Association and Delvany Powell.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Committee Chairs Williams and De La Rosa, Committee Members and all City Council Members. My name is Delvany Powell. I am the President of the United Probation Officers Association, which represents almost 700 probation officers and supervising probation officers. The majority of whom are women of color working in the City of New York in all five boroughs. In its simplest form, probation is the alternative to incarceration. We serve the city faithfully as law enforcement officers. We carry guns, perform search and seizures, execute warrants, make arrests, remove guns and drugs from homes, and make filth in, in some of the city's most dangerous neighborhoods, all substantially similar to the work of police officers. We deal with the same individuals in the criminal justice systems as correction officers, making sure those on probation obey the rules, work toward rehabilitation, and are held accountable in their actions, all substantially similar to the work of correction officers. There are, however, some substantial differences. Probation officers must have either a graduate degree or a bachelor's degree and two years of experience in counseling or casework, something correction and police officers do not need. We also prepare reports for the courts, conduct risk assessments during the, during, and during the pandemic, we were ordered by the mayor's office to monitor inmates under corrections jurisdiction who were, who were released on electronic monitoring program to minimize the spread of COVID. Our caseload has increased tremendously with implementation of race and age, which now puts more New Yorkers under the age of 18 on probation rather than in prison. Yet, the number of probation officers have decreased tremendously because we are set, we are paid significantly less for our work than white men, substantially similar work in different agencies. If you don't already see the picture, let me explain. UPOA represents women and women of color, struggling to make ends meet because of an outdated and unfair pay structure that that ultimately acts like a paper cup with holes at the bottom. No matter how many new employees probation puts into the cup, a disproportionate number drain out the bottom because they cannot make, they cannot make ends meet on the salary significantly below par. The data is clear. The highest paying jobs are still reserved for white males. The problem is that probation is mostly black females. In fact, we've recently discovered that approximately, approximately a third of our members are paid less than the legally allowable minimum salary under our contract. As a city council and the first female dominant city council, you have the power to change this. The UPOA looks forward to working with you to eliminate the segregated workforce of this city and replace it with equal opportunity for all. I want to thank you for allowing me to address you today.
Thank you. And not seeing Ms. Newfeld here, we'll next turn to M. Celeste Carballo, Exhibition Preparator and Executive Board Member, Local 1559.
Good afternoon. My name is Celeste Carballo. And as you said, I'm on the Executive Board of Local 1559, which represents workers at the American Museum of Natural History. I am an exhibition preparator there and I've worked there in various capacities for 10 years. The workers at the culturels, while DC 37 members are frequently not included in conversations about New York City's municipal workforce. We share many similarities with the city's workforce. And I ask that the city council members keep us in mind when considering these three bills being discussed here today. When I became a full-time preparator in 2018, I had attained my childhood dream job, which was to be an artist who works on the models and dioramas at the Museum of Natural History. My starting salary in 2018 was in the $33,000 range, which is considered very low income in New York City. I lived with my parents for years to be able to keep the job that I had wanted for so long. I grew up in Hell's Kitchen, the daughter of Argentine immigrants. My father has been a member of 32BJ SEIU for most of my life. So I have long understood the importance and benefits of being in a union. I have a BFA and an MFA and over $100,000 in student debt with interest that keeps adding up. Were it not for the support of my husband, I would not be able to sustain myself on the preparator's salary, which for me is currently below $54,000. This is still considered very low income in New York City. The archaic city pay orders are in great need of reevaluation and need to be adjusted to reflect the true cost of living in this city. I am hoping that the passage of these three bills examining pay equity and diversification in the municipal workforce will help provide the data and the political will needed to amend these pay orders. I've witnessed multiple talented union members resign in the past few years because they could not make ends meet. One member of our scientific staff was working at Trader Joe's to supplement her income because she could not afford her rent. She ultimately resigned. An exhibition preparator had a side job teaching at FIT in order to supplement her income. She too eventually resigned. Several other, several other full-time coworkers have side gigs to make ends meet. This is a problem that existed long before COVID. And now with inflation, our meager paychecks are worth even less. The cost of living has gone up exponentially, but our pay has not proportionally increased over the years, leading to this current crisis in the city workforce. My landlord refused to renew my lease last month and openly admitted that they intended to relist my apartment for $1,200 more than what I currently pay. I will note that they are asking for far more than the apartment ever rented for pre-COVID. If the city cannot create rent caps for the majority of us living in non-regulated apartments, how are we supposed to live with such a lack of stability? I know that I'm not the only person who has experienced this sort of upheaval in recent months. Our small paychecks do not support the cost of rising rents and day-to-day expenses, whether it's groceries, fuel, or other basic necessities. This makes it not only impossible to save money, but impossible to plan for the future. We also need to address the fact that these abysmally low salaries are a barrier for entry for anyone who does not have a financial cushion, whether that's a trust fund or family support. Low pay, in fact, prevents people from disadvantaged communities from entering the workforce in the culturels. Similar to the civil service jobs, our union members at the museum have jobs that require certain levels of education, training, and experience. Why do we treat these jobs as if they require no skills? For too long, city employers have banked on the fact that there are plenty of people who will line up to work for them. And that alone justify the low wages because there is intrinsic value in being able to do work that is rewarding or prestigious. Well, as they say, you can't eat prestige. Decades of this practice has resulted in low morale, which in turn affects the quality of work and the number of people willing to do this kind of work. With low morale comes diminished participation in government and democracy as people lose faith that the unions, politicians, and other institutions have their best interest at heart. This is a downward spiral that we need to put an end to. Some people complain that individuals should not go out and get expensive college degrees if they can't pay off their student loans. But our jobs at the cultural institutions are part of what makes New York City the incredible place that it is. These institutions generate millions of dollars in revenue for the city each year, yet we can't pay their union employees a decent salary? Lastly, because our salaries are so low, institutions like the AM and H now have a chronic staffing and retention problem, which places more burden on the existing staff. And with members juggling side jobs to make rent, how can we expect people to take on even more responsibility at their main jobs? People are leaving to take jobs in the private sector where the pay is better. Increased diversification of the workforce is a noble goal, and I urge you to pass these three bills. But we are not going to get there without significant increases to the salaries paid to the municipal workforce, including the culturels. The city needs to recognize that its workers make the city run. We are the heart and soul that may operate behind the scenes, but without us, the city cannot function. We did not accept these jobs because we set out to make a ton of money. We have these jobs because we care about what we do and we seek the stability and protections that unions offer. Like many of my colleagues, I love my job and truly value the unique community at the museum. But to be clear, we are not asking for a luxury. We are asking for respect in the form of living wages. Thank you.
Thank you. And not seeing Irving Rivera, we'll next turn to Kyle Simmons, President, Local 924, DC 37 Laborers.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, all. And I want to thank you, the chairs of these very necessary committees, for allowing me the time to voice my opinion. I also want to thank the city council for putting this pay equity report together in August of 2021. My name is Kyle Darren Simmons. And since December of 2001, I have been fighting the battles of these and other kinds of minority inequities as President of the New York City Laborers, Local 924, which is the only majority-minority public service 220 construction prevailing rate title in the City of New York. I'm angry. I'm mad. I'm disappointed, but mostly I feel violated because the city government that was supposed to help you are the ones that are constantly screwing you with a straight face like they are not doing anything wrong. And most of all, nothing is changing. I'm sorry for the very harsh word. But if the devil puts a mask on and portrays themselves as angels, but their actions say otherwise, what else can you think? I'm employed by the Department of Environmental Protection as a city laborer. As a utility, as a utility company, private or public, in New York City, you are required by law to pay prevailing wages and benefits. Over the last five years, they have hired about 300 workers with the title of city work, city park workers that are minority-based titled, that are received poverty wages to perform prevailing rate work. You don't have to take my word for it. Ask the city controller's office to provide a survey on what they are actually doing, not only what the city separately placed on paper for you to review. Like DEP, the majority of city agencies use these practices to perform unskilled laboring work that is prevailing wage. The city laborers title is the only unskilled title that can assist every or any skilled tradesman titled that is employed by public service. That is not only include in other work we do that are responsible for. So why is that, that the City of New York employs more than 15,000? That includes mayoral and non-mayoral agency, public service, skilled trades title. Yet there is only now about 500 city laborers. And that number is where it is because after more than 25 years of absence of, of laborers in NYCHA, because of a federal oversight since July 2018, they have hired over 150 city laborers to perform the unskilled prevailing wage, wage work there. During their testimony, the, the city talked about bargaining. Since when city or the unions are able to bargain away protective class of workers, their rights for legal wages and to violate the laws and regulations? New York seems to try and fool everyone into thinking that they are a wonderful melting pot for everyone to live, which is false. They just want to get you here at the same time makes themselves look good to the world and then they abuse you. For example, if you don't have legal working papers, which is very time-consuming, you still have to work. Too many businesses take advantage of that and pay them low wages or even cheat them out of what they are promised them. If these businesses get caught, they are allowed to plead out, pay a fine, and continue on with their lives and do it again. And that is they, that is if they are caught, which is a rarity. On the other hand, if the same employees steal $100, a side of beef, or let's say even $1,000, they are processed as criminals. What's wrong with that picture? Yet we see the major, major problems in NYCHA, New York City, Police Department, HRA, our educational systems that has devastating negative impact on the minorities' communities. Over the last 40 years in New York, I can stack laws, rules, and other city regulations to the moon. And we still have in this conversation in 2022. These are the facts and the realities of what is going on. It's our truth. No matter how many explanations or excuses we try to give, this is what the city administration put forth. I believe that the city council should ask for federal government monitor to oversee not only the city hiring practices, but review existing wages and exact work duties that are performed by these minority workers. They need to review so-called bargaining techniques and the impact it has on the minority workforce that also affects their next generation, which is their children that will not now continue disparaging impact for future generations. As President, I can show you how they really do business, not to show that they come with as a public relations campaign. And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much. I want to thank this panel for their pointed testimony. I think what you all have described today is the reality, right? Increasing cost of living, living in our city and stagnant wages for workers, particularly workers of color, right? We're not going to mince words here. We have been saying throughout this hearing that agency accountability is something that we got to figure out. So I just want to thank you all for coming and for sharing your, your thoughts on this. I did want to ask one question of the United Probation Officers Association. We asked the agencies today about the report that was done by the Forensic Labor Economist about promotion disparities. And they had no idea about this report. Do you have any information about the report that was done that shows that almost one-third of officers are not even paid the minimum allowable salary? Meaning that they're not even paid the least amount, that they're obligated to be paid under collective bargaining? And like, any steps that have been done to your knowledge to remedy this issue?
Can I tell you honestly? When I, if you give me like a couple of minutes.
Yes, of course.
When I became the president of this, of the probation officers' union and I did my own assessment and I pursued this EO case that we have now, the things that was being revealed is a surprise to me. When that report came out about the third of my members not being, of being underpaid, I was astounded. So I'm, we're gonna, right now, we're at the stage of trying to figure out the next steps to deal with the equity issue and that underpayment. So that's where, that's where we're at now. But I was, I was astounded. And as we continue to unveil the layers of the banana, we keep finding more things that's very disturbing.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to argue that, you know, in a, in an industry where it's majority black women and this continues to happen, how is this being allowed?
And Mr. De La Rosa, if you allow me to add that, another thing that's disturbing is that I don't understand when, when I heard the panel speak earlier about EMS not being identified as silver, as uniform. Now, if we're the alternative to corrections, and I brought this up with office labor relations before, if probation is the alternative to corrections, that means we're at community corrections, then how could we not be considered uniform? And that's another layer. And that's another issue that we face. And I believe that when you asked about solutions, Ms. Williams, that I believe one of the solutions for us is that we need to somehow be, and this might be a different formula for that, that probation officers need to be acknowledged as uniform law enforcement officers because of all the things that I described that we do, it's impossible for us not to be. And I think that if we can get over that hump, then we can start looking at some of the issues that is impacted. As far as promotional issues that we have within the department, that's another thing that I want to piggyback off of Mr. Henry and Gloria and my other fellow union reps that the abuse of how these, how these, how these, I could say for fact probation abuses the fact that they prick and choose civil service promotional positions and they abuse it where there was a point they was hiring people from the outside for positions that is clearly in the DCAST rules and regulations, how you're supposed to get promoted. So those are the kind of things that we hope that you will look at. We have a position that's, that's administrative probation officer that I do not represent, but hasn't been examined since 2007. And that's disturbing, so.
We were, we will be exploring civil service and the exam and everything else in future hearings, hopefully. And we hope that you will come back and speak to that.
And hopefully we can get a seat at the table and have some input. Because the fact that, and I'm saying one more thing, the fact that there was no clear oversight, it's like the agency's word is being taken, is being taken for like as God, as the word, but there's nothing else that oversees that word that they're saying. So they could be telling them anything. And I can tell you from our experience, I'm quite sure it's not being told the truth. I'm leaving at that.
Just had a quick question. Do you know if state probation officers are considered uniformed?
Excuse me?
State, the state probation officers, are they considered uniformed?
Okay, the difference, this probation officers are the city. Parole is the state.
Oh, parole.
No, it's okay because we all learned it.
Parole officers, yes.
But parole officers, I'm not sure. But probation officers are, are considered, but what's happening, I know is when I talk to my colleagues like in Suffolk County and other places, that the profession is going more toward law enforcement. So I, and I think that the issue with probation officers, we have such a myriad of responsibilities that many people don't seem to understand the role of probation officers. And that's why I've been out here advocating and trying to educate the role of probation officers. So I know that one of my colleagues in Suffolk County, he's gotten himself under that role of civilians and now they're under the, the uniform. But parole is separate from us, but that's what we're trying to get to.
Yeah, that's why I had inquired because I do know parole officer and.
That's the state.
Yeah, yeah, the state. I know it's the state, but I was just trying to see what similarities or differences exist to your point about being uniformed and sort of being respected as an officer. Just wanted to know if you had any insight on how state parole officers, which is different, but serve similar roles.
Similar roles.
Parole officers are also, like you said, an alternative to state facilities.
Right, because they finish the rest of their time, right, right?
Yeah, for the museum employees, we were just wondering like what levers do we have for accountability, right? Other than funding that the city council has, most of the unionized workers, the benefits are done through collective bargaining, right? So we were just wondering if you had any thoughts on that.
Well, as I mentioned, I think that a lot of the problem also stems from the pay orders, which are extremely out of date. I mean, when I started full-time in 2018, I had been working at the museum at that point for six or seven years and doing the same work that I was hired for full-time. I was working as a freelance, basically a contractor because, you know, because they refused to hire full-time staff as they should. And they did not take into consideration any of those years of experience doing the work that I was qualified to do and started me at the absolute bottom of the, you know, the pay order, the parameters. So that was a problem. But also that the bottom end of the parameter is so low that starting someone in 2018 with, for a job that requires a certain level of education, certain level of experience and is a very niche job, it should, like $33,000 is just, it's not, you can't live in New York City in this day and age on that.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you for this panel. And now we're going to turn to Zoom. And we will hear from Kathleen Nuth, President, EMS Superior Officers Association, Orin Barzalay, President, Local 259. President Local Two Five Oh Seven, DC Thirty Seven, FDNY EMS, Anthony Almojera, Vice President, Local Three Six Two One, EMS Lieutenants and Captains, Laura Moran, President Local Two Six Two Seven, DC Thirty Seven, IT Workers, and Jose Hernandez. But we will first turn to Kathleen Nuth.
Good afternoon, thank you, Chair Williams, Chair De La Rosa, and the committee members. As you heard, I'm Kathleen Nuth, and I'm the president of the EMS Superior Officers Association and the FDNY. We represent the deputy chiefs and division chiefs in the Bureau of EMS. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on pay equity in the municipal workforce and in support of Intros five fifteen, five twenty-seven, and five forty-one. I would also like to thank this body, especially the speaker, for consistently showing up to support pay equity in the municipal workforce, in specific, the FDNY. The issue of pay equity could not be more relevant than at the FDNY, a department whose first responders are an integrated team providing cohesive emergency services, but which engages in a policy that separates and treats differently the two halves of this integrated team of first responders. There is an outdated mentality that our EMS first responders perform less important, different, and less dangerous work than the first responders within the department's Bureau of Fire Operations. Without diminishing the heroic work of our colleagues in fire operations, for which they should be commended, the work performed by our Bureau of EMS members is equally heroic and should be valued equally. We really must ask ourselves, why isn't it? It does not go unnoticed the extreme differences in demographics between the two bureaus and the respective titles they are in. This creates a vicious cycle, causing several unintended consequences. Obviously, being underpaid is demoralizing to our members and causes them additional stress of trying to make ends meet in one of the most expensive cities in the world. A long-term impact of underpayment is the increased turnover of personnel, which is not only costly to the city, but puts the public at risk. It also discouraged qualified applicants from applying, putting even more stress on the job. In addition to segregating the workforce, the department represses our minimum salaries and does not, does not give our EMS members a chance to flourish in their careers. By way of example, as the city panel testified that all EMS had been under contract, that is not accurate, my local is still in negotiations, because the salaries and patterns being proposed for our members who are the deputy chiefs and division chiefs is not only far less than our fire operations colleagues, but it's also even less than our subordinates in Local Thirty Six Twenty-One. Unfortunately, the FDNY is an excellent example of what the city must not do to its municipal workforce. By creating false differences that undervalue EMS and make them seem different and less than, the city justifies a two-tier system that perpetuates pay inequity to the great detriment of the department as a whole. Fixing this will help us all. As the saying goes, a rising tide raises all boats, and by ensuring fair pay for EMS first responders and the greater municipal workforce, we ensure better treatment for all New Yorkers. Additionally, I would just like to add in rebuttal to what the city said. They're claiming that the titles are already equalized, and hearing that they have sixteen hundred titles, I believe that they're using those to justify pay inequity by changing the titles so that comparable titles are being paid less than their peers that are predominantly white and predominantly male. So we can argue that there is equality within a specific title, but not all qualities are being, not all titles are being treated equally, especially when we continue to maintain the difference in a pay pattern between uniform and civilians. Thank you again for your time and commitment to this important issue, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, and next we'll turn to Orin Barzalay, President Local Two Five Oh Seven.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Orin Barzalay. I am the president of Local Twenty Five Oh Seven, representing over four thousand uniformed EMTs, paramedics, and fire inspectors serving in the FDNY. I want to take, thank the committee chair, as well as the speaker, for your tireless efforts with this important issue. To be honest, it is very disappointing that DCAST and OLR are so unwilling to be part of the solution to this very serious problem that has had such a devastating impact on our members and the greater municipal workforce that serves this city every day. This is not the first hearing we had on this matter. In fact, the disparity of pay in our department is so staggering that in two thousand twenty, this body passed a resolution calling on the city to remedy the pay inequity within the FDNY. Yet here we are again with the same excuses and no action. Equal employment opportunity is not a goal in the future, it is a right that the municipal worker has today. Pay equity is not too expensive. What is expensive is the crippling effect of discrimination and suppressed wages. And it's not just pay, it's respect, value, and benefits on the job. FDNY withholding benefits to EMS while pretending they are civilians, even though the law says otherwise, is not just unlawful, it is inhumane. Let me try to put this face with this matter so much. Crystal Cadet, a paramedic and a member of our union, was not able to be here today, but submitted a testimony detailing her experiences as an EMS first responder when she was injured in the line of duty by contracting COVID on the job in the early part of the pandemic before there were vaccines or medic, or medicines to protect her. Paramedic Cadet was in a coma for a month, intubated and fighting for her life. By the grace of God, she pulled through when many did not. Was she held up as a hero by the FDNY? Was she given the resources and benefits that many first responders in the FDNY should be given when they risked their lives to save others? No. EMS first responders are now allowed unlimited sick leave, so she had to use up her vacation time, and then when she had no more vacation time, she had to fight the bureaucracy of workers' compensation, which pays a fraction of what she was making. Because as an EMS first responder, she is not recognized as uniformed by the city, even though the law says she is. She is not entitled to disability benefits. Instead, she has to go through a grueling process, hiring an attorney to fight NICs for disability, which most likely she will not get, all whilst, while trying to heal from the life-threatening illness. The department has not given her a reasonable accommodation like a desk job, as they would could, of course, give a firefighter in this situation. The prognosis for paramedic Cadet is that once her workman's comp runs out, she will be forced out of the department and lose her career. This is unacceptable. She risked her life for this city and its most vulnerable time in history. This is what pay inequity looks like. I will give you another example. EMS first responders handle fire calls along with firefighters. They work side-by-side firefighters, even going onto the fire floor. At any fire scene, you can spot EMS first responders because they are FDNY members wearing the beige jackets. Imagine, God forbid, as they are working together, a gas line explodes or the fire traps them, and their lives are tragically lost. A firefighter family gets a lifetime of death coverage, where they receive the firefighter's annual income for life, and the spouse and children get lifetime health insurance, along with many programs to cover their college, et cetera. Let's say conservatively that first, that firefighter's salary was a hundred thousand for twenty-plus years, health benefits, that's two million. The spouse of first responders, who happens to be in a beige uniform EMS, gets the value of three years of salary, which again is significantly less than their firefighter counterpart, and nothing more. No lifetime health insurance, no health insurance for children, no lifetime salary. Let's say their salary is fifty thousand a year for three years, that's a hundred fifty thousand dollars and no benefits. When are we going to start valuing the lives of these women and people of color who fight every day to save the lives of others, only to be treated with such indignity and disregard? This is what pay inequity looks like. That's my testimony, but I would also like to say something to the panel about Chairman De La Rosa, I thank you so much for speaking about the uniform status. The panel that was in front of you today, as my colleagues have said, are blatant liars. Maybe somebody should look at, at the, at the racial makeup of OLR. They're constantly putting blames on unions for accepting these pattern bargaining when they are refusing to acknowledge that it doesn't work. Two percent of a hundred thousand dollar wage increase over any other uniforms who are making a hundred thousand dollars is different than an EMT who's making fifty thousand dollars, and these wage gaps keep increasing, as Henry mentioned earlier. It's disgrace of how they are sitting in front of you and blatantly giving you false information. I have been involved with this uniform status since its inception in two thousand and one, and they are refusing to acknowledge us. All they did was separate us from DC Thirty Seven and allow us to bargain as a civilian I have, I'll take any questions if you have.
Actually, we'll continue our panelists first. Next, we will turn to Anthony Almojera, Vice President Local Three Six Two One.
Good afternoon. Thank you Chairs Williams and De La Rosa, and distinguished committee members. My name is Anthony Almojera, and I am the Vice President of Local Thirty Six Twenty One, representing EMS lieutenants and captains serving in the FDNY. I'm going to follow up on the testimony of my colleague, Mr. Barzalay, to first thank these committees and the speaker, and express our support for Intros five fifteen, five twenty-seven, and five forty-one. The transparency these bills will bring is much needed. Anyone who has worked for the city or has basic familiarity with its workforce understands that the problem with pay inequity is citywide. We hear time and again that the titles are just too different. The disparity in pay is reasonable, and the demographics are coincidence, or at least not the city's fault. As you heard today, the city admitted under oath that they are violating Local Law Nineteen, among others. In the FDNY, you have firefighters who are predominantly white and male, and EMS first responders who are mostly of color, with significantly more women. You can guess which side is paid pennies to the dollar. The argument being the fireside's work is substantially more challenging, justifying the pay difference. But when you actually look closer, the facts show something very different. Since nineteen ninety-six, due to a decline in structural fires and a change in the emergency needs of the city, the New York City Fire Department merged with EMS and became an integrated department of first responders, providing lifesaving emergency services to protect the public. Both EMS and fire personnel dispatched to the same emergencies, are trained at the same facilities to perform lifesaving skills, and put in the same hazardous environments in the field. Some of the emergency services which EMS and fire are both trained for and respond to together include, but are not limited to, active shooters, basic lifesaving and trauma events, bomb threats, building fires, car accidents, cardiac arrest, chemical leaks, electrical fires, exposure to contaminants, otherwise known as haz-tac, emergencies, hurricane response, respiratory distress calls, terrorist attacks, et cetera, et cetera. In addition to this field work, the work performed within FDNY operations, such as dispatch, training, and general operations are fully integrated. As such, there is no difference in the work performed in these units, whether EMS or fire personnel perform them, with one exception, that EMS responds to three times the amount of call volume than firefighters, one point six million calls to approximately five hundred thousand fires, fire runs. Yet the department continues to perpetuate, I'm sorry, yet the department continues to perpetrate the myth that these titles are so different that it justifies paying the EMS first responders half what the firefighters responding to these same emergencies are paid. And to be clear, the training and expertise of EMS first responders is highly intense and substantially more than a firefighter. By way of example, firefighters are only trained in minimal, basic lifesaving, less than that of an EMT, while paramedics are trained in advanced lifesaving. What that means is that a firefighter with five years' experience is paid ninety-six thousand dollars in a year to provide less basic lifesaving services in the same emergencies than an EMT with five years' experience, who is paid fifty-nine thousand dollars a year to provide more advanced lifesaving services at the same emergency. There is no non-discriminatory explanation for that. While the environment and demands of FDNY first responders are similar, what is different is the racial and gender makeup. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you being here to listen to all of us, and I remain open to any questions the council may have.
Thank you, and our next panelist will be Laura Moran, President Local Two Six Two You're unmuted, Laura, you can go ahead.
You can start when you're ready.
Laura, you're unmuted, you can go ahead and start your testimony. I don't think she can hear me. Okay, well, I'm going to turn to the chairs if they have any questions.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to thank this panel again. We did have a line of questioning around the uniform status, around the collective bargaining, and you're right, we didn't get answers, we got non-answers. And so we can guarantee you, this will not be the last time that we will bring this up, and we thank you all for your courage to call out something that is a disparity that is real. So we want to thank you so much.
Yo, I can't hear anything. So you're asking me to speak because I can't hear anything?
Okay, you may want to log out.
Okay, all righty. Greetings, distinguished council members and captain committee chairs. I am Laura Moran, President of Local Twenty Six Twenty Seven. I represent over fifty-nine hundred IT workers for the city of New York. I am also a Vice President of DC Thirty Seven. Without my members, nothing in the city will work, and the majority of my members are people of color. We have a large Asian population, a lot, we have a lot of Indians, a lot of Chinese, as well as African Americans and other, people from other African nations, as well as a large Hispanic population. So our members comprise mostly of people of color, and they do suffer disparity. They have issues with EEO, they are bullied, and they don't feel comfortable going to the, the agency's EEO, EEO offices, because they feel that nothing's going to be resolved and that the EEO office, all, most, most office sides with the agencies, because they're, that's their coworkers, and that's who they are there to protect. So a lot of times when they file inside a particular agency, an EEO complaint of harassment or discrimination, and it's not founded at the agency's EEO office, and they go outside, those same, those same complaints are founded outside of the city agency. So we need to recheck and have some changes done within that area, because I don't think it's a good place to have those places, to have EEO offices so connected to management. And I want to also say that I am, and my members are, in support of Intro five forty-one, five twenty-seven, and five fifteen. And it's good that these hearings are taking place and that these issues are being brought upon, and I want to thank you all for bringing, bringing this up and being brave enough to put this forward and make sure that these issues are brought to daylight, because it's been hidden way too long, for, for many, many years, that agencies were allowed to hide and manipulate and only, only provide data that makes them look a certain way, which we all know not to be true. My members, too many times, they're not promoted and are passed over for raises. We have agency jumpers, and why is it that we have people who have to jump from agency to agency just to get a higher salary based off of the skills that they have, which are, which are definitely in high demand? And it's sad that I have to tell my members at a meeting that when you look too comfortable, when you, when people, when you're, when management see that you're, that you have stuffed animals. when you, when people, when your, when management see that you're, that you have stuffed animals, that you have pictures of your family sitting on your desk, they know that you're not going anywhere, so they feel they don't have to do nothing for you because you're too comfortable. And it's sad that I have to tell my members this, that when you look comfortable, management gets to overlook you, and not, unless you're a pet or a favorite, they don't give you a raise. They save the merit raises and promotions for those they like. All too often, the civil service lists are, they use the one in three rules to overlook a lot of my members. Not so long ago, there was a promotional list for computer system, for computer specialist software out, and, and we found out at DSS that most of the people on that list was considered and not selected and was removed from the list, and they didn't even know they were removed. How is that allowed? I have to file a complaint with the agency's Office of Labor Relations because the agency had every intention of going to the hiring pool for the open competitive when they only picked up, and they had about sixty people on that list, and they was able to consider those people and not select them, and those people were never notified. So how is it that this can happen? That you can be on a list and be considered for a position, never be interviewed, and subsequently removed from that list and never be notified? So that needs to change because it is definitely not fair, and I have to tell my members that they have to call and check on Oasis every week or two just to make sure that they're not removed without their knowledge. There's something, so there should be more disclosure. It needs to be more, it needs to be more visibility into this process, and DCASTS does have the ability to make such changes. And then, when, when the city is not able to get and keep people, they want to go to consultants. There's, in IT, there's a large amount of consultants who really do not care about the city. They have no vested interest in making sure that they provide a good service to the city. They have no interest in, besides creating more pay orders, more, more billable hours so that they can make as much money for their company to go into their pocket, and a lot of those companies have, are not based of, they have
Time's expired.
Foreign countries that are working, and those workers and consultants are allowed to telework, whereas my members have to come in every day and work for the most, for the majority of the part, because the mayor is insisting upon that city workers be, all be made to come in. Whereas for my members, telework is real easy and it's the best way for the city to get and keep good workers because they are losing workers at a high rate, and that is a big problem, and we need to have that issue addressed because people are retiring, people are just leaving because they, they don't see it as being worked anymore. Whereas a pension and, and the city benefits used to keep them, but that's no longer the case. So it's, I'm thinking also there's training disparity. Training is not offered to everyone, even though DCASTS do put out the list, but it's usually hidden. I know when I, when I work, I have to go look for it when it comes out and share it with my coworkers, and even then you still have to get approval from management, and management oftentimes, if they were not, if you're not, were not one of their pets, you would not be approved for that training. So yes, training may be offered, but who is it being offered to? And who is being allowed to participate and take advantage of that training? So that is also being used, and my members are being discriminated for that. So I just ask that you look into that, and we may want to consider having automatic steps because a lot, a large number of my members are at the minimum salary, and they never move up. They, they can sit there for ten, fifteen or their whole career without moving from level one, and a lot of my titles have four, three or more levels, and if we had like a state, a step system similar to what the state have, at least they will have an opportunity to get a little raise every year that they work for the city, and it gives, and it gives them incentive to stay, to get an incentive to want to work harder. And with the state, they, if you had a higher degree, if you got a higher degree, you can move through the steps faster. That's something that we could look into as well. So that's my two, my ten, my two pennies, my two cents, and thank you for the stability to be able to testify.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. And next on our list, we had had Jose Hernandez, but I do not see him on the Zoom, and other people that have registered, I am not seeing in the committee room or the Zoom. If there's any member of the public that we inadvertently missed, please use the raise hand function on Zoom now if you have not testified. And not seeing any, I will turn to the chairs for their closing remarks.
Thank you so much. I want to thank everyone who came today and offered testimony. This is for sure an important topic. I want to make note and thank our Speaker and the staff for putting together this report today, and I also want to read just the last paragraph of the introduction, which says, I think encapsulates what we've discussed today. It says, "Those with the authority, power and voice to make change have the responsibility to ensure advancements. As the first women majority council, we will not rest until women, particularly women of color, are valued equally for their crucial contributions to the city. More than three hundred thousand New Yorkers serve this city of eight million residents. Nearly sixty percent of that dedicated workforce consists of women, and more than half are black and brown women. They field our nine-one-one emergency calls, they clean our parks, they reintegrate formerly incarcerated persons back into communities, and they provide care for the most vulnerable among us. They keep our city running. The devaluing of the work historically done by women must end. We will not stop until we are paid the equitable wages we deserve." Chair Williams.
I echo the sentiments of Chair De La Rosa and look forward to continuing to work on this issue and find real solutions. I think today we heard from the administration, we heard from EEPC, and it's clear that we have a long way to go, although thankful that we're able to even put forward this report to demonstrate in transparent fashion what the pay inequities are. I do look forward to finding that tangible solution to address occupational segregation and address some of the issues that were raised today by all of the amazing people that testified. Thank you.
We do see that Orin and Kathleen have your hands up. Do you have a final question or comment? Yes, Orin?
Hi, we've all been waving our hands because we couldn't hear the past five minutes.
If you asked a question, we're apologize that we were the panelists.
Yeah, we couldn't hear anything while we're sitting the past five minutes.
We were just thanking you all and giving our
We still can't hear you.
Okay, well, there might, there might be a technical glitch here.
I believe you're still muted.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
I think it's the one called City Hall Committee Room.
All right. Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you, Anthony, yeah.
I can hear Anthony, yeah.
Well, we can't hear the city council panel.
Right, I can see the little mute sign is on next to City Hall Committee Room.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so we, can you hear us now, yes?
Yes.
So we were just thanking you all for being here, and rest assured that we will continue to tackle this important matter. We wanted to also point to the, the report that we, the council has put out today under the leadership of, of Speaker Adams, and just to say, as the first women majority council, we will not rest until women, particularly women of color, are valued equally for their critical contributions to the city. We also will keep bringing up this issue. We know that the devaluing of the work historically done by women must end, and we will not stop until we are all paid equitable wages we deserve. So we thank you again for coming today, and we will continue to follow up on this important issue. Thank you so much for being in attendance. The hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.